So, good evening. Welcome. Welcome to our regular council meeting. If you'll please silence your cellphones and stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we ask your blessing on our town of Paradise. We ask that you would keep our residents safe and well and that you would be with our employees, our police, our fire, our public works, and all of our employees, and that you would keep them safe and in your arms. We also ask that you would be with us as we deliberate on matters about the town and that you would give us wisdom to make the right decisions. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
So, Tina, roll call vote.
Roll call. Vice Mayor Boland.
Here.
Councilmember Cullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Tryon.
Here.
And Mayor Crowder.
Here.
Thank you.
So, before we move on to the first presentation at the beginning, in closed session after the June, it was Item 2A, after the June 14th, 2022, special town council meeting, the town council unanimously approved resolution numbers 2022-34 through 2022-37 related to the MOUs from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025 between the following: the Town of Paradise and the Town of Paradise Police Officers Association; the Town of Paradise and the Town of Paradise Police Management and Mid-Management Association; the Town of Paradise and the Town of Paradise Confidential and Mid-Management Association; the Town of Paradise and the Town of Paradise Management Group. And we want to thank all of these groups for negotiating in good faith, and they, everybody knew we had to do what was right for the town, and I think we got that accomplished. And our team did a good job, and our employees did a great job, so thank you very much. Item 2B.
I would just like to make one comment to that, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate what a great job that everyone has done. We really appreciate all of our employees from the four of these five associations that worked with us and, you know, really tried to get to an agreement with the town. We appreciate them. We appreciate the employees that are within those associations. And I just want to say thank you, and thank you to those up here who were on that team also.
Thank you. So, Item 2B, direction was given, no action was taken. So, 1E is Presentation by Cal Fire Paradise Fire Chief Patrick Purvis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, town staff. I'm actually going to do your presentation tonight, probably my last presentation to you folks here on the council. And before I get to there, I want to introduce the new North Division Chief as well as the Town Fire Chief, Pat Purvis, will be stepping in behind me and doing these presentations and addressing your town's needs as the Fire Chief. So, he's going to stick around. Hopefully, you're able to say hello to him before you leave this evening. The presentation that I have for you this evening, the first, is going to be about a 13-minute video from our folks at North Ops who take care of what we call predictive services, and they look at fire season holistically. And in this scenario, just the next three months, it's going to be broken up into three parts: the drought conditions that we have, the fuel conditions we have, and then the overall outlook for the Sierra Nevadas and kind of the Northern California area, which really focuses unfortunately on the belt of the Sierra Nevadas and stuff here. So, without further ado, we can jump ahead. We did test. Okay, good.
Welcome to the North Ops Significant Fire Potential Outlook for June through September 2022. The webcast will be broken into three parts: setup ingredients, expected weather patterns, and overall expectations. The first section will go over several setup conditions that are applicable to either current or past conditions. It can give a glimpse into future fire season trends and severity, although future weather conditions can change the setups in a short period of time. Despite some unsettled weather with the jet stream dipping south at times, May precipitation was below, well below normal across the majority of the region. Near-to-above-normal precipitation returns were found across the North Coast. Average temperatures were split, with cooler-than-normal readings across the North and generally near-to-a-little-above-normal across the South. Water year precipitation remains below normal across the majority of the area excluding portions of the East. Average temperatures from October to May are near-average, with a tad cooler hint across the North and a little warmer across the interior. Long-term drought conditions remain pretty steady state from late April to late May, although a slight improvement occurred across Del Norte County due to the precipitation at Valverde. Drought conditions worsened across Central and Southern California. The Evaporative Demand Drought Index, or EDI for short, helps to capture shorter-term drought fluctuations. EDI represents the thirst of the atmosphere, and the ingredients such as temperature, wind, solar radiation, and humidity anomalies can impact fuel conditions. This one-month EDI graphic, calculated at the end of May, shows where the highest-stress fuel due to short-term drought conditions is likely to be. Most of the Greater Bay Area and Sacramento Valley foothills is under some sort of stress condition and lines up well to where the recent large-fire activity has occurred the past two weeks. Since we are talking setup ingredients, it is always nice to give some historical context. Comparison graphics of the one-month EDI since 2018 for late May is used to frame this context. Current values appear to be somewhat unique compared to the previous four years, although there are some similarities to the three big fire years of 2018, '20, and '21. Moisture found within the snowpack lowered from 30% to 40% of normal in late April to 5% to 15% in late May. The current readings compared to the previous six years is right in line with low-snowpack years of 2018, '20, and '21. The Tahoe Downer Alert Wildfire Webcam, which sits near 7,800 feet, shows the dramatic change in snowpack between late April to late May. Fuels are now prematurely exposed to the sun's drying energy across most elevations. Following a topsy-turvy April in regards to dead fuel moisture trends, more significant drying occurred across most areas during May. The current North Ops 1,000-hour dead fuel moisture value, indicated by the blue line on the left graphic, shows unusually-dry values as of May 31st. Energy Release Component Index, which is comprised of various dead fuel moisture values and KBDI but largely determined by 100 and 1,000-hour readings, is above normal, substantiating unusually-dry conditions across the region. Based on the projected weather patterns, unusually-dry dead fuel should continue most areas during most of June. Herbaceous curing has accelerated further up the slopes compared to April, with mostly cured annual and perennials below 2,500 feet, but excluding the North Coast where periods of precipitation has kept the perennials greener. These trend photos from two webcam locations east of Yuba City and the North Bay show the dramatic curing between late April and late May, just shy of 2,500 feet. Some sort of rain-up state is found between 2,500 to 7,000 feet depending on exposure to the sun. Pictures taken in late May from various alert wildfire webcams with different elevations show the area caught in a varied herbaceous rain-up state. Curing will work its way up the slopes as June progresses. There is a much clearer picture in the herbaceous fuel loading across Northern California compared to projections during March and April. Near-to-above-normal loadings will be found across the area favoring the Sacramento Valley foothills, Greater Bay Area, and portions of Northeast California and the Far East Side. The picture illustrates the heavier grass growth along the shoulder of Highway 299 east of McArthur on May 18. Two locations that do forage sampling in the Sacramento Valley foothills PSA indicate near-20% above-normal forage loadings based on 40 to 50 years of collection. Shrubs are currently in a mixed flammability state, with some species taking on moisture while others are drying or curing and becoming more flammable. This graph illustrates moisture trends in sage across Northeast California. Both sample sites indicate that the moisture content has peaked and is trending lower, with one site above-normal and another site below-normal compared to average. The sampling is following the historic moisture curve and should become more flammable later in June. Chumice fuels found across the lower elevations are increasingly becoming more flammable. There are some wild card fuel conditions found across the region that would contribute to additional flammability. During late December, a series of strong winter storms affected Northern California and created large areas of blowdown across Nevada, Placer, and El Dorado Counties, as well as across the Six Rivers National Forest and Humboldt County. Lots more laddering of the fuel bed will occur in these blowdown areas and contribute to more efficient transfer of heat hence body. The long-term drought conditions built up over the past few years has increased observed mortality in the forests. Picture on the right was taken near Donner Pass this past winter, and the red needle trees are very apparent. In summary, long-term drought conditions remain across the majority of the region with the short-term drought signals showing up across the Greater Bay Area and Sacramento Valley foothills. Dead fuel moisters are unusually dry and will generally remain unusually dry during the next several months. The alignment of flammable, herbaceous, and live, woody fuels has become delayed some due to the recent cooler-than-normal temperatures favoring the north, but some alignments are starting to show up across the lower elevations and is linked to the recent large-fire activity. Areas of the region experienced significant blowdown during December storm events, and tree mortality due to long-term drought is increasing across the landscape. We will now shift gears and talk about the expected weather patterns during the next four months. The two main teleconnections, or a couple oceanic and atmospheric forcing mechanisms, will likely remain the Vila Niña with the enhanced trade winds and cooler sea surface temperatures across the eastern Equatorial Pacific as indicated by the three-month anomaly loop and a negative Pacific decadal oscillation, which is represented by the arc of cooler-than-normal water found off the North American coast and the warmer-than-normal water to the west. These teleconnections are most likely to alter the jet stream track in high-low-pressure positions during June and September or the summer transitional periods, but they will provide some forcing during the summer months. Past analog years that contain similar teleconnections to the current atmospheric-oceanic state provide higher confidence outlooks, especially in the first one or two months. Choosing the appropriate analog years is as much art as science since global climate change has likely altered the interaction of these teleconnections, thus impacting how global circulations behave. The Mand Julian Oscillation, or MGO, is an equatorial phenomenon that is hard to predict several weeks in advance and generally has less influence during the summer months, but is a consideration to look at during the next four months. Confidence is moderately high that La Niña will continue through the summer into the fall. June appears to be pretty similar to May with some jet and trough fuel intrusions with some moisture, but generally drier overall. A positive analog upper-level pattern suggests troughing over the western tier of the U.S. The latest CPC monthly forecast for May suggests near-to-below-normal precipitation, and the predictive service outlook calls for a more solid below-normal signature. CPC and predictive service forecasts indicate mixed temperature anomaly signals. Lightning will continue to be associated with some of the trough passages with typical alternating northerly and westerly enhanced dry wind flows. One of the analogs suggests a slightly stronger wind speed signal for the region. Confidence remains high for an unusually-strong southwest monsoon signal, with the wetter plumes spending more time west of the Continental Divide across the southwest third to half of the U.S. This is especially seen in the predictive service forecast. CPC continues to show an above-average precipitation signal across portions of Arizona from July through September. It is likely that the North Ops region will be on the edge of the semi-permanent heavier moisture plumes during July, which means a better chance for some significant fire emissions and growth. It should be noted that some of the analog years suggest a more developed offshore low, which would be one ingredient to a healthier monsoon push into Northern California. Some of the analog years are suggesting more Pacific trough influences during August, which would shift the more robust monsoon signal further east. This is indicated in the latest predictive service precipitation outlook. Marine cooling across the near-coastal areas is more likely to occur under this scenario, but remember analogs are most useful during the first one to two months. The monsoon signal is expected to weaken earlier than normal during September with a mix of dry trough passages and unusual warmth due to ridging in between the troughs. This predictive service forecast suggests warmer-than-normal temperatures and near-to-below-normal precipitation. The expected four-month weather patterns suggest mixed temperature anomalies and near-to-below-normal precipitation. There will likely be less extended heat wave events compared to last year. Critical wind patterns appear to be normal overall, with changeable northerly and onshore wind flows during June and less potential for northerly winds during the summer, but returning during September. Lightning is likely to accompany some Pacific trough passages during June. The summer monsoon season is expected to be robust across the southwest this year and is likely to impact California more during July versus August. The next section will cover the overall fire season expectations within the four-month outlook period. As curing and flammable live and dead fuel alignments grow, a larger above-normal footprint is found across Northern California during June. Normal large-fire activity is represented by one to two large fires per PSA. Lightning from passing Pacific troughs is always a big wild card during this month and will be crucial since the flammable fuel alignment should be found across most low and mid-elevations up to 5,500 feet or so. The mid-elevations will have more alignments later in the month as herbaceous and generally shrub fuels cure. Above-normal significant fire potential remains across the majority of the region during July and August with lessening risk among the near-coastal influenced areas. July and August is represented by one to five large fires per PSA, but the Bay Area PSA is observed less than one. Monsoon moisture surges will be the big wild card during this period, although is likely to occur with more frequency across Northern California during July versus August. The current thinking is that fuel and weather pattern elements would align to create heightened significant fire potential across all the area during September. Typically, one to three large fires occurs within each PSA, although less than one occurs across the Far East Side and Bay Area PSAs. In summary, the large-fire season has set in across the low elevations with additional flammable fuel alignments working up the slopes during the next couple of months. Monsoon surges are expected to provide some lightning ignition issues, or so during July versus August. Can't rule out a so-called wall period during August, but fuels should be unusually-dry during this period in most areas. September looks to be active based on the current weather and fuel projections. The national fire season will likely be active again this year. Several important ingredient setups and expected critical fire weather patterns are in play for several geographical coordination center areas during the next four months. This concludes the North Ops Four Months Significant Fire Potential Webcast. If you have any questions?
All right. Well?
That was encouraging.
Yes. Those folks really love their job, and they do a great job putting that together for us every month, actually. But it's a very honest analysis of the fire season and what it looks like, so '18, '20, and '21 is kind of an alignment of what they're seeing. Again, you know, a lot of information on the southwest Four Corner region, but we really watched that, and that really, and '20 drove, was the last time we saw that, the amount of lightning that came through in July, and that's what they were talking about there. So, we're anticipating that setting up and potentially happening this year as well. A few other items, and then we'll let you move on with your night. Just a reminder that our alert wildfire cameras for Sawmill Peak, they're up and running. Typically, we have one set on the town, the other one just kind of oscillates around and captures. And then there's numerous cameras that have been added over the last year to the alert wildfire system, so we have, suggest everyone get on there and take a look and click on those cameras. We have the ability in our command center to turn them, and we do during fire, so folks can see what's going on from that view. Next, Mark. The evacuation plans are on both the Town of Paradise website and the Butte County OEM website, which is represented there. The OEM website also has, down in the lower right, is the Find My Zone icon that the county is now, has a zone for the entire county. It's broken up. Folks can go there, type in their address, see what their zone is. Next slide. And the unique thing about Paradise, when we put this together, we made sure that we matched what is on the maps, the 2020 maps that we're handing out. So, Zone 1 on our maps matches the, we see Butte, B-U-T, top, Town of Paradise, 01. Those zones match, so the information is correct, whether they have the pamphlet or if they go online, it mirrors each other for those zones. And then these zones will be turned on or off, and you can see the icon working with Paradise PD. You see the orange for an order, a yellow for warning, and then, of course, if there's the green shade, they're just doing some testing. So, folks will be able to go on there and see if their zone is under evacuation, or if they share this link and information to folks out of the area, they'll be able to see what's happening as well.
Are those mobile-friendly?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's important.
Yes. Wildfire watches and warnings, no change from last year. Fire weather watch is a time to be prepared typically 12 hours into the fire weather period. They'll do an analysis, the Weather Service will, and typically upgrade it to a red flag warning is what we see at that point. Of course, we're trying to communicate that out to the public. We put our signs out at the fire stations and here at Town Hall to kind of get everyone's awareness of any red flag conditions. Next. So, the equipment that we have out there, the biggest change over last year is that the overall Cal Fire response now will include the Orville City contract coming over July 1, which will add two more fire engines to the regional response capabilities, but you still have your two primary fire engines here in the Town of Paradise that are cross-staffed with a WiLAN engine at both stations, so they're able to get off the larger engine onto the WiLAN engine, which has more hose and things for response, and is obviously smaller to get into some of the areas in and around the town and outside of the town to get on fire. So, I believe that's the last slide. So, any questions?
So, you had on there, can you go back to the last one air attack?
Correct. So, we've always had one air attack at Chico.
Okay.
And one tanker. This year, we will tomorrow, actually the 16th, no, two days from now, we'll have a Type 1 helicopter to Cal Fire at Chico.
So, is there any change in how that's working this year? I mean, are they gonna, are those on standby at all times?
Yep.
24/7?
Yes. Cal Fire has 12 of them spread out across the state, and it's based geographically on a 20-minute response. So, if one is not there, the next closest one will come. And then we're also, you know, Chester has an air attack that we're able to pull from Grass Valley, Sacramento, and then Redding, or kind of...
Is that enhanced from last year, or is it the same as last year?
It's the same. The only thing that's enhanced on the Cal Fire side is we've added an additional Type 5, Type 1 helicopters, so we have nine in Northern California now, 18 overall in the state that we didn't have last year that are on contract, committed to Cal Fire and our ability to grab them instantly and use them instead of ordering them.
Okay.
So, you said Paradise has two fire engines?
Yeah, that are staffed every day.
I thought we had three fire engines.
Well, we have, we have three, but as far as being staffed every day in the town, you have two fire engines that are staffed every day, 81 and 82.
Now, we're...
So, how do we, okay. So, we used to have three fire engines, 81, 82, and 83.
Three physical fire engines.
Yeah, and we, because, and when we had Station 83, was it on wagstaff, and that covered Upper Skyway and Upper Clark and that section of town, and with the response times, when we looked at all this stuff years ago, I mean, so if, so now we're covering that from Station 35?
That's right.
So, we still have the same response times, but that's not our fire engine?
At Station 35?
Yeah.
No, those are two Cal Fire engines during the summer, which we are at, we call peak staffing.
So, what did we, did we sell one of our fire engines? Where's our third fire engine at?
We have a third fire engine as a reserve, but the...
That belongs to the town that we don't staff.
So, if one of the two primary engines goes down, they can staff that as a reserve.
So, our labor contract with Cal Fire includes the staffing of three fire stations to cover the entire town with proper response times?
It includes Station 81, 82, and the Amador at Station 35 in the winter.
Okay.
So, you, the town pays for half, the county pays for the other half out of that station so that that engine's available to respond into the town or the county because it's right on the border. That's been, that's been the model for seven years?
A long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah. Any other questions?
...as quickly as we can. Unfortunately, it's taking a lot longer than we had hoped, but we feel very good about the path that we are on, and I know like Brian mentioned to you last month, we have a Plan A. We're still working our Plan A very hard. We have a Plan B, C, D, E, and F as well. So, we feel very confident in the path that we're on, but we have some contingency plans as well.
Okay, so we still, at this point, it still hasn't been submitted to FEMA?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any cards on that, Tina?
I have no cards on this item.
I have a question. In there, it said something about the early warning system?
Yes.
So, okay, we've put out bids or whatever. This is for the construction, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're in fire season. When do we, when's the anticipation of that being, at least one of them being constructed and working?
Yes, and I think when you say one of them, you mean like one tower, so...
At least one, yeah.
Right, so this project, they're all going to be constructed at the same time. It can't really, it doesn't work that way. They all, it's part of a system. So, we did have an RFP go out, that has closed. We now are at the point where we will be bringing a recommendation to council to select the contractor to construct this at our June 29th council meeting.
My question is, when do we think one will be operational?
Yes.
Six months from now? Two months from now?
This fall is when construction should begin.
In the fall, after fire season?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No more questions for Collette? Okay.
Thank you.
Mark Maddox, Public Works Director, Town Engineer, Infrastructure and Sewer Update. Any questions for Mark?
I have a question. In your report, Mark, you talk about when the draft EIR is going to be released, and I thought it was June, but it says July.
It does say July. So, the overall draft EIR has indeed taken longer than we anticipated, but I can say it's gotten better with each passing day. We've had additional resources added to the project through our legal team. We've been doing administrative... We've been doing administrative draft consultations with lead stakeholder agencies such as the city of Chico, Butte County, LAFCO, and others. So those have been taking time to get into the draft EIR, but what I can say is that the draft EIR is virtually done, and that's really good news. And it's going off to the editor for ADA compliance very soon, this week or early next week, and we have a release date of no later than July fifteenth, but it'll be the week of July eleventh. So no sooner than July eleventh, but no later than July fifteenth for the release of the Paradise Sewer Project Draft Environmental Impact Report. It's been a long road to get it going. It has taken longer than we expected, but again, I'll repeat that, it has gotten better. It's solid, it's legally defensible, it's the best version we could put forward, and we're really excited for it to come out next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Cards, Tina?
I have no cards on this item.
Tony Lindsey, CDD Building and Code Enforcement, update. Any questions for Tony?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I really appreciate the report, Tony, and it looks like you're making really good progress in terms of finding people, housing, and closing cases, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Well, that was too easy.
Cards, Tina?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay. So on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, if I might make an announcement on this one? Yeah, that was a time. As to Item Two-E, there is an employment agreement that is available regarding this item, has been placed at the dais for each council member to review. It is the employment agreement with Kevin Phillips for the town manager, which is why I've asked him to step down from the dais in compliance with Government Code Ten-Ninety. Any member of the public that wishes a copy of this agreement, Tina has some up here at the, at the dais, you can come up and grab one if you'd like, but other than that, we're ready to go. But I did want, I did want to announce that there were copies up here available for members of the public.
Thank you.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second?
Motion by Boland, seconded by Colleton, to approve the consent calendar, Vice Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Colleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Kevin, welcome back.
Okay, nothing removed. So, public communication.
I have a card from Ward Habriel.
Good evening, council. Happy Flag Day, by the way. Tonight, I want to address a couple of things. I know we have an issue coming up about Senate Bill Thirteen-Eighty-Three, but I have been a guest speaker four times in the last two months to address Senate Bill Thirteen-Eighty-Three with other audiences and garden clubs across the state. I have to tell you, similar to what we have here, most communities have not issued an ordinance yet that describes what they expect of the public in the way of waste disposal of organics. We're lacking it here. The county is lacking it. The county recently had a symposium that was attended by over six hundred online people, and CalRecycle basically said, "We're still looking at how we're going to do this," and they're not really helping counties, cities, or towns in how to enforce or implement the ordinance that's in Senate Bill Thirteen-Eighty-Three. There are several things that have come up, and I got to tell you, one of them that really bugs me is the seventy-seven point four million tons of plastic a year that California tosses away. You do it, I do it, everybody does it. A lot of it is in our waste stream, but unfortunately, sometimes what we put in our recycle stream doesn't work very well. And I have a little demo here. This is a typical candy jar, and it typically comes with a...
Could you bring that full next time?
These are recyclable, but this one and this one are two different kinds of plastic. Reuse would be better than recycle. So if you're thinking of composting food waste at home, you would have a worm bin, and you'd need a container to put your salad scraps and vegetable scraps in before you fed the worms. And guess what? Those two go together with no impact on the landfill. Now, I'm sure, I am sure, none of you have one of these, right? Of course not. You wouldn't, no, nobody up there would have one of these, I know.
What is that, Ward?
Before you put it in a recycle bin, you cut the bottom off, you cut the sides off like this, and you have a scoop. Reuse is better than recycle. There are very, very few communities in this state, or in this county, or in this town that help people to understand what we throw away is way too much stuff. You don't emphasize it, the county isn't doing a good job emphasizing. The state is still vying with Newman when he says, "Oh, guess what? We're responsible for global warming in the United States because of this stuff we bury in landfills. When it decomposes, it offgasses methane, that reduces the ozone later. We are responsible for global warming. Blame the state of California." Thank you for your time. None of that was true.
Thank you, Ward.
Thank you.
No more cards, Tina?
I have no more cards on this item. Aaron Singer would like to speak? Is that correct?
I didn't see the card, I got it too late. My countercard just took her kids. Oh, she's back! We're from the Campfire Collaborative and Spiritual Emotional Wellness. We won't take too much of your time, but this is Kristy.
Hi.
I'm Aaron.
I'm the chair.
She's the chair, I'm the co-chair, so I back her up. Go ahead.
Okay, we just wanted to take the opportunity to let you know what we're doing up here in terms of spiritual emotional wellness within the Campfire Collaborative. So I'm sure you know that your residents are just starting to come out and feeling well enough to participate in Party in the Park, and so what I would like to offer, and this is just an informational thing, we're not asking anything of you, but we felt like it was a good idea to at least inform you. The collaborative's going to be coming up August first, and I think you might know, it's, I believe, there's within the Boys and Girls Club, so the collaborative's coming up from Chico. And have you guys all heard of the Campfire Collaborative? Let's start there.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm looking a lot of blank faces, but that's okay. Okay, so I am trying to help, I'm going to be going at the Megalia Community Center, as well as getting to know the zones within the zone captains. We're trying to revive zone captains so that we can offer wellness within each zone. And so what I get to offer is imagine you, and I don't know about you guys, if you felt triggered today with the wind, but a lot of the residents feel triggered, and so thinking about when we're feeling the wind, you may go into a state of trauma, which then I want to help you find a wellness image that you have created within your own self, and then trying to get the neurons and the neurological pathways to go to wellness images, and just to help bring a sense of ease. Hi, thank you. A sense of ease to the community. So each one of us, we have Soul Sanctuary, which is another partner of ours, and so we're so great to have Mimi Brown offering, she's going to start getting free therapy for low-income residents. She received a grant from Northern Valley, and so we have all these different team players that will be here, hopefully for a while, to just help the community. And I'm sure you all know Aaron, so he was really great. If you've heard of Richard Yale, he was the chair, he's the Chair Emeritus, and so thank you for the opportunity just to be here. And also, I give free hugs, this is a great way, I hear the residents say that I give a real hug, and so if you want to come see us, we'll be at Party in the Park, and we're asking residents to put pins in their zones, and I'm sure you know that a lot of the residents are in Megalia, and they don't have a zone, which I don't need to be the first to tell anybody here that that's a concern for them. So we're going to be using the Megalia Community Center. So you'll see a lot of us coming out in programs within the community center, so thanks. Do you want to say?
Sure, yeah, just that we want to be an impact here in our community, whether it's in Megalia or in Paradise. We want to make sure that people can readjust to being in their own community in a way that feels normal for them. You know, having fires once in a while, seeing smoke, and having wind, and hearing sirens, those are all triggers, and we want to help them to kind of overcome those things that can be a part of the community again without feeling scared or feeling fear. So that's our goal.
Tom?
Tom, great.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions? They're up for three minutes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so, public hearing. Conduct the duly notice and schedule public hearing, occur with the recommendations adopted by the Planning Commission of May twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. Hold on one sec. So this public hearing is about our twenty-twenty-two to twenty-thirty housing element update, and this is one of seven elements that are in the general plan, right? So we've started that process of updating, this is the first one to hit your table. So just a refresher about what housing elements are. As I mentioned, they're one of the elements in a general plan. They are updated every eight years, so this is what the state calls the sixth planning cycle, and that's going to run till mid-June of twenty-thirty. And then, once we get through these hearing processes, it goes ultimately to HCD at the state for certification. And what the housing element does is it really dives into what are our needs now for housing, as well as for this eight-year period, different financial segments of housing, plus every jurisdiction has allocated a housing, a regional housing allocation number. So there's a certain number of houses or multifamily dwellings we're supposed to make sure that we can accommodate. So this is our plan of how to accommodate our allocation. It also puts in their goals, policies, and programs about how we're going to make those opportunities available. So the regional housing needs allocation, it starts at a state level with HCD, where they figure out regionally what the housing needs are. They push that down to the county, and for us, that goes through BCG. So Butte County as a whole had an allocation of fifteen thousand five hundred and six units, so that's single-family and multi. Then BCG works with a consultant and the jurisdictions to divvy that up amongst the jurisdictions. So Paradise's final allocation is seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine units in an eight-year period. Totally understand that we likely won't build that many, but we just have to show we can accommodate it. So of that seven thousand and change, it's actually broken down further into income levels. So that first column there is how our housing allocations are broken down, the majority being in the above moderate, which is probably, you know, the most realistic scenario for our rebuild, for the single families. And we really focus the low income and the very low with the multifamilies where we can. And then you can see in the middle column, that was Butte County as a whole, including Paradise's numbers for the income allocations, and then you can see what percentage Paradise took of each of those levels as well in that last column. So while this may be your first time to see the housing element, this is the process it's been through so far. Summer of last year in August, Planning Commission had a public study session with the staff, consultants, any public who wanted to attend about what this whole update process was about. Every eight years, it's likely that, you know, commission, the faces have changed, so just reeducating. Then in September, we did a focused community engagement meeting that was in person and online, and we followed up with online surveys, and this is in addition to very structured conversations with organizations that focus in multifamily housing, and specifically affordable housing, to get feedback from all segments. And then, at the beginning of December through beginning of January of this year, the public draft review, or the public review draft of the housing element was available for people to look at. We took any comments that were received, which were essentially just grammatical, and turned that back around for the initial review from HCD. Before we get to council, HCD gets a ninety-day review period to give back comments, because by the time it comes to them for certification, they want it to be at the ninety-nine percent point. So they get a ninety-day window to review. They contacted us in the middle of that review period with some additional information they needed, so we kicked that back in March to them. Then April fifteenth through May fifteenth, we put out the environmental doc for public review. May, we had our Planning Commission hearing. Tonight, we're with council. If council has consensus to approve, we'll turn it around tomorrow and get it to HCD for their final review and certification. So some key updates to this housing element over previous ones. One is about the Paradise Sewer Project, and I just want to clarify that the housing element does not rely on the sewer. We have plenty of available lots to meet our allocation without the sewer ever coming, but we, we want to acknowledge it, that if it happens during this eight-year period, what could we do to further more housing opportunities? And so there is a discussion in the housing element about doing a sewer, a sewer service overlay zone. So if you had property that was served by the sewer, we could potentially increase the density, so instead of fifteen units per acre that we can do now, let's look at thirty units per acre, if you're served by sewer. So those are on the main corridors, and this would only happen when and if the sewer happened. We also incorporate any new state housing laws, which have come into play in the last eight years. In this case, there's been some laws about transitional housing, another revision to density bonuses, farmworker housing, and then adult care homes. Post-fire housing types, in this housing element, we do talk about as a jurisdiction, just being supportive of all types of housing that might be proposed. That could be workforce housing, the tiny home villages, any kind of these innovative building technologies that you've seen come, just making sure that there's opportunity for anybody who wants to try these out. Another new one, and this is unique to us, is fire resiliency. We specifically, when we put out the RFP for this, asked for this to be part of the housing element, because why build back all these homes if we haven't worked on laying the groundwork to make them as safe as we can? So this is more about identifying those highest fire-risk areas in town, usually canyon, and then how can we partner maybe with Parks and Rec, who's also working with a consultant, about acquiring some of these higher-risk parcels so that, and then looking at opportunities to encourage the rebuild closer to evacuation routes. And so these are just goals for the town to look at for that in terms of safety.
Just a quick question. Yes. So you're looking at purchasing the sewer?
Not necessarily us, but being a partner with, and we've had meetings already with Parks and Rec, they're working with the Nature Conservancy, if that's right, and they've done some modeling to show if these highest-risk parcels, usually along the canyon on the east side, if we were able to acquire some strategic areas, and I say "we" as a large collaborative, doesn't mean the town, and we're able to maintain defensible space on it, the computer modeling for the fire patterns coming into town shows such a reduction in risk. So it's working with them, supporting them how we can about that.
And are these privately owned?
They would be.
And they would be volunteer if they want to sell them?
Purchased, yes.
Okay.
There's nothing in there about eminent domain. It's about working with them to purchase available, yes. Another one's CDPG DR grant funds, that's the money that Business and Housing has, that fifty-five million allocation for multifamily. We have it listed in there under Financial Resources, working with developers about how can we, you know, utilize that money for some of these larger multifamily projects that are affordable. And then affirmatively furthering fair housing, this is brand new since last time, this is one of those state laws, so this is talking about what the town will do to make sure that all of our housing opportunities are inclusive and not exclusive. So these are the four main categories that we got corrections back from HCD, and I just wanted to let council know that when we met with HCD, we were the only jurisdiction to get what they call the short form correction for this. Everybody else had, it sounds like over twenty pages, ours was only six, because there's so much state law, they have to add to that, but we did such a good job with staff putting this, and our consultants, putting this together to start with. We were the only jurisdiction to get the short letter, which says, "If you make these corrections, it will meet the requirements." And so those four areas that we had were the fair housing assessment. We just needed more detailed information, but they understood that everything we had pre-fire wasn't going to work for us. So they allowed us... So they allowed us to use the local survey that we did because we knew the census info was being delayed that Housing had put out. They let us do interviews and additional outreach to gather that information. Permitting process. We had to provide just more detailed information for zoning purposes. What kind of use permits? Do people have to go through for different types of developments? What are those costs? What are those timeframes? Sites inventory for those, for that Rena allocation. They just needed more information about how we calculate affordability for manufactured because it's done a little differently than stick-built. And then program timeframes. All the programs that are in the housing element for staff to complete, they all give a timeframe that we are doing our best to meet. And a couple of those just had ongoing, and sometimes that's okay. But in these three instances, they wanted concrete timeframes. That was about developing the density bonus incentives because that's part of the new state law update. How often we're going to meet with the Far Northern Regional Center. They're the ones who kind of oversee some of these care home facilities in town. And then also our housing condition survey. A couple of years back, Business and Housing had boots on the ground to look for areas of town that can maybe benefit from some of their rehab money, understanding that's a little different scenario right now. But we still had to talk about a time that we would do those housing surveys. After we published the agenda, HCD had three other comments that we weren't able to get in there to make the corrections before we published. Those were two pages, on page 24 and page 87, just to remove the term "state-licensed" from in front of the phrase "residential care facilities." They just wanted to say residential care facility. Some are licensed, some are not. So they wanted these, those narratives to not have that on there. And then the other was adding just a reference to Table 4-4, which is a large list of all the multifamily developments we've already had come through post-fire. So instead of restating that earlier in the document, we just added a reference, "If you want to see that list, go to this page." And then the other comment they had was to amend the council resolution to allow staff to make non-substantive changes for any other responses they have when they're doing the final certification. So if it's stuff like this, where we're not changing actual programs, which they've already vetted, that staff would be empowered to make those changes and resubmit versus coming back for a hearing unless council wants to see them again. And by all means, we'll bring them back. So the council action requested tonight is to concur with the recommended actions adopted by the Planning Commission, to adopt and certify the initial study and negative declaration, and then to adopt the 2022-2030 housing element with those text amendments about striking state-licensed and adding a reference to Table 4-4 via an amended council resolution. And that amendment to the resolution would read... So right now, the very last sentence of the resolution is about the town council adopting amendments to the housing element and updating, or adopting this updated version, set forth in Exhibit A attached here too. And then adding to the end of that, "Town council authorizes the town manager or his designee to make non-substantive changes to any additional edits requested by HCD for certification."
Question time?
Yes, sir.
All right. First off, thank you for doing this. I can't imagine the time spent. And I would, I couldn't make it through. So I thank you very much for what you're doing. And I know a lot of this is checking the box for the state. I get it, you know, it's... And it sounds like they understand our situation, and that's why they're working with us.
They do. They've actually been very understanding as much as the state can and given us some leeway about how we're collecting the data, which is outside of their norms. So I'm very grateful for that.
That's very, yeah, that's very, very nice to hear. You add the word, "we have to accommodate these certain housing elements." What does accommodate mean? How do you define accommodate?
So if we hadn't had the fire, like the eight years that we're finishing up right now, our allocation was only the 3,000 range. So it's literally, you'll see at the end of the housing element, there's this huge spreadsheet of parcel numbers. And it's identifying parcels that have the capacity either for second units or just vacant parcels and what their potential ultimate density could be to show we have enough land with the current zone.
So that was before the fire?
So after the fire, all but 340, I think it's 42 of those units, they're all for rebuild. So every property that already had a house on it counts as one of those 7,000. So we have enough to cover.
Do single-family home rentals count in this housing element?
Yes. ADUs, primaries, multifamilies, condos.
How do you know if a house is, a single-family house is a rental?
We have to take, they're best educated guess, especially when they're applying for it. So if it's, if the owner lives at the property, then we're going to presume that's owner-occupied. But ADUs, almost always, unless they tell us differently, are counted as rentals.
And the reason I ask that, that's, yeah, that'd be an obvious way to do it. I was shocked afterwards to learn how many rentals we had up here, single-family housing rentals. It was amazing. But, all right. So I'm going to say this, and I don't mean this in a bad way, but I'm not very excited about us taking up properties on the canyon and buying those. I think that's some of our nicer pieces. Yes, I understand there are some of the more exposed. I think our exposure happens in the county. And because the county won't do their job to give us defensible space on the edge of Paradise, we end up using up our property, that's choice property, for views and different things. Do you use them for fire breaks? I just, I'm going to tell you right now, that really disappoints me that that's happening.
Let me find that section for you because I don't think that it necessarily requires that the land acquisition be within town limits, but it's more about an activity that's going to protect housing that's in the town. So, okay, here it is. So it's working with Paradise Recreation and Parks Department, Nature Conservancy Conservation Biology Institute, and any other stakeholders to identify the highest priority parcels for wildfire risk reduction buffers. And those, those are the areas. So it doesn't say it has to be in town limits. And I do recall from the modeling, some of that kind of goes down into the county. So I agree with that.
What have they bought so far? Town limit properties?
No, I'm not aware. They have not even got that far. Right now, it's just been some computer modeling with the subject matter experts to help understand the difference that various targeted acquisition and defensible space could do.
So, and I agree with that part. And I think that's strategic. And I think there are, well, I know, there are county pieces that use town roads to get to those county pieces and town infrastructures and stuff like that. So I get that. And I think those, those make sense, the county pieces. But I really, I really don't, I mean, those are the, those are the ones that people want, those are the choice pieces. Those are the ones that people are going to build some nice homes on, and they should. And so anyway, that's, that part there, I hope...
Just real quick on that, too. I do believe that they were looking at the unusable pieces of those properties, so not taking the full parcel, not the buildable portion. But a lot of those properties are extremely big, and they have a huge unusable piece to it that sweeps all the way down. A lot of those go all the way down and touch the North Fork, I believe. So looking at maybe just taking the unusable pieces as that portion and leaving the portion that actually has the ability to rebuild.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
And many times, they buy those because they don't want no one building below them. And so that's, that's a good reason. But if it was used for something that was unbuildable, then...
And it says right here that on the periphery of town. So that's what they're looking at is along those canyon pieces.
Well, you understand what I'm saying.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would just, I do have some concerns with working with Nature Conservancy. Many in agriculture have had difficulties with them. They do have a tendency to try to tie up land for environmental purposes. So I would just be a little cautious with them.
Good to know.
Isn't it great job, Susan? And it's really exciting because we've been kicking the general plan down the road for 25 years or more. So it's really nice to see it's actually getting updated and made current. And I'm glad to hear that the state, at least one little community in the state government, understands our reality.
Right.
You know, and that's encouraging. I agree with Greg's point, you know, and I heard about some people donated their land to the Parks and Rec, and that's all cool. I remember in the '08 fire, when we were over on the North Fork side over off of Pence. I was out there with Jim Brochures, our fire chief at the time. And I get the risk, my concern or my, and I get we got to put this in. Okay, great, it's in the plan. Doesn't mean that it's ever going to happen. But, you know, a fire doesn't come up a hill and go 90 degrees. It just doesn't. In '08, we had the ember spread, the spot fires were happening 100, 200 yards inland. It comes up and over and drops, you know? Yeah, if you have a house right on the edge and you have all that underbrush, the heat may ignite the house. But, you know, so some of the science, and I hate to argue with science, but some of the, you know, where they deem these are the most high-risk, these insurance companies, I just don't, I think it's bogus. I think they're not being smart because fire guys told me, said, "No, this is how the fire goes. It comes up and it lands over here. It doesn't come up and go boom like that. It just doesn't." So even in a wind-driven event, so. But great job, and I'm glad we're getting the general plan updated. And, you know, let the state, "Yeah, yeah, we're going to do all this wonderful stuff on the periphery in the county that we don't have any jurisdiction over. So we'll put it in our plan. Talk to the county." Thanks.
So at this time, it is 7:04. I'd like to open up the public hearing to public comment. Dina, cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Okay. Well, so at 7:05, we will close the public comment.
I move approval.
I second.
With the changes that...
Move the approval with the changes giving the town manager or his designee the ability to do that.
All right. Motion by Cullaton, seconded by Jones. Roll call, vote. Vice Mayor Boland?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullaton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 6A. Discussion consider waiving first ring of town ordinance number...
Oh. 619, sorry.
Thank you. 619. Susan?
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. Thank you, Council. This item for consideration is a follow-up to our meeting in February about filing the notice of intent to comply with the state. So this is just one of those state regulations in SB 1383 that all jurisdictions, it was supposed to be done by January 1st, but most have not done it yet. But in 2022, have an updated solid waste ordinance that incorporates 1383 and has enforceable mechanisms in it. So this calendar year, the way that this Senate bill was written, jurisdictions were supposed to start providing organics collection to all residences and businesses. And by organics, they mean food waste in addition to green waste. The jurisdictions are supposed to establish edible food recovery programs. There's two different tiers. Those who, it's more the wholesale is tier one. And then when you get down to restaurants and such, that's tier two. We have no tier-one businesses in town that were subject to that ordinance starting this year. So we've got a little window of time there. Start doing education and outreach. Procure recycled and recovered organic products. There's actually a calculation for how much mulch and compost, natural gas, we're supposed to procure from facilities that are licensed through SB 1383 in addition to some old stuff that we already do about buying recycled content paper materials. And then also capacity planning for new organic processing facilities. And this is something that myself and Ward have been part of these meetings with the county about how much capacity do the jurisdictions need in the county overall? And how are we going to meet that? Through a transfer station, through trying to site an actual facility? How far away would we have to go to find a facility? Because there aren't any that do combined organics in Butte County. So those conversations are supposed to be happening this year, and we started those months ago. So notice of intent to comply, this is that resolution that was adopted in February and submitted to the state. And they did end up approving it. We got the notification mid-May that the notice of intent to comply was approved. And that's our phased rollout of compliance where I think the furthest-out deadline we had, which is even beyond the deadline that they said they'd agreed to, is end of 2025 to try to figure out where do we take the materials? These facilities just don't pop up overnight. So December of last year, we had our local population waiver denied. May of this year, we got the notice of intent to comply at a phased rate approved. Right now, tonight, we're talking about the updated solid waste ordinance to comply with SB 1383, and that's for all jurisdictions. And then from here, we start working towards complying with those deferred requirements of that Senate bill. Staff's working with CalRecycle. They're going to meet with us about doing a corrective action plan. That's what it's called when, you know, you have these items to complete, and they're going to take you longer than August of 2022. But that's good because it gives us that time that we, that we need. So the mandatory organics disposal reduction ordinance is what they call it. And the easiest way to incorporate that into our existing ordinance is just to add a new Article 1 that follows the existing solid waste ordinance we have, which is really about collecting it and disposing of it. And so we updated the terminology. Instead of solid waste, the state now says municipal solid waste, recycling, and organic waste. So you'll see that strike out multiple times. We reference all the Assembly bills and Senate bills that got us here in just that original section. The new Article 1, this is based on the state's model ordinance for this so that we would know it meets all the minimum requirements. Because when we're done with this, we send it into HCD to show that we complied with that. So these are just, I'm not going to read them all, but these are the bullet points just of all the stuff that's included in that new section. It's the residential, commercial requirements, the food generator requirements, self-hauler. Some of these things I wanted to point out, though. There's a CalGreen recycling requirement. We've been doing that for over a decade. Greg knows all about it. It's the CND, the construction and demolition recycling you have to do. We've been collecting those forms and getting that information for about 12 years now. So that's not new. And then the 2015 MWLO compliance, that's when the state updated landscape regulations. And if you didn't update your local ordinance, which we didn't, then this just becomes your minimum standard. So we've been enforcing this for the last seven years. So that's not new to us either. So that's two things that we're already doing, and then we can just focus on the organics. So this calendar year, it's about, again, adopting an ordinance that includes enforcement for SB 1383. Starting this year and up until 2024, this is where we start doing reviews of our, of our routes, who our customers are, what kind of services they have to figure out where we need to implement or where we're missing services. And then in 2024, that's when actual compliance and enforcement is supposed to start. So between now, the rest of this calendar year and next calendar year, we're focusing just on education. 2024 is when we'd have to actually start enforcing if we have a facility to take it to and if we were no longer under a corrective action plan, which we expect to still be. But if we had a facility... But if we had a facility, 2024 is the enforcement time. So the local assistance grant, this was another ordinance that council passed in February that allowed us to make application for some grant funds. They were non-competitive, that were coming up $20,000. They do require an updated enforceable ordinance. So once we have one, we'll send it in so we can show that we're fully eligible for the funds. But part of that is just to help with some of those requirements. The enforcement inspection, education outreach, capacity planning, wherever we need to plug that into. Are there costs associated with this that we don't know about yet? Yes. Right? So tonight, we know that by introducing that, it doesn't trigger anything tonight. But all state mandates, unfunded state mandates, there's going to be something that comes at us later. We just don't know what it is yet because we don't know what this is going to look like at the end, right? So can the program inspections and enforcement be handled by the existing staff? And when I say staff, I mean between the town and NRWS. Free fire, everybody was being served with, you know, green waste, recycling, solid waste. We were able to manage all of the violations, the inspections, the route audits, the education. We could do all that with who we had. That's been reduced on both sides. So as the program ramps up, as the rebuild ramps up, is our staffing going to be able to handle adding organics to it? We're not sure yet. Can procurement requirements costs be offset by partnerships? So part of that thing about buying mulch, buying compost, you can partner with other agencies that need those materials, like Parks and Rec. Maybe they need some mulch, and if they buy it in our name, then we get the credit towards that percentage we're supposed to purchase. So it's taking a look at who can we make partnerships with that need those materials if we don't need them? So we can at least show compliance that way. But whatever can be offset, what will that cost us to do? Or if, part of it's natural gas. So what if, I think, Jody, you would know, some of the B-CAD buses, right? Don't they run on
I don't believe they have any CND buses.
No. But if there Oh, gotcha. If there were, and they could procure some of the materials from a site that complied with requirements, and they got it in our name, then we could get credit for those materials. So we're still exploring what that could be.
So let me understand this. They're requiring that we buy these materials whether we need them or not?
Or we partner with somebody who does need them, and they just get it on our behalf.
But if we don't find partners and we don't need the materials, what the heck do we do with them?
Exactly. And that's part of the unfunded mandate and the unknown cost. What if Parks and Rec doesn't need 100 tons of mulch? Okay, well then, who else might? Or to figure out how to do that, so.
Hard to believe the government would come up with this.
It's so onerous. It's incredibly onerous.
I have to ask this question, Susan.
Yes.
What do they do to us if we just say?
No.
No.
Yes.
What do they do to us?
They say they fine us. I couldn't give you an amount.
Bring it on.
I don't know, but
We'll just send them our compost.
Good luck collecting the money. I mean, you know, we find people all the time. We never get the money.
Right. In our case, there may be some opportunities. So let's say we do some of these larger multifamilies, and they could use some of the mulch or something for their landscaping that's five foot away from their structures. Then their percentages could count.
You know, let's, we had a meeting earlier today with somebody that has a facility. There's none here. Everybody, everybody, even the state, they don't know how to do this shit. They have no solutions. And everybody is pushing back on it.
So we're all going to just say yes to it?
Where we're at right now is that by this law, we have to amend, we have to add all of this stuff into our thing. It's crazy. When you pull a building permit, by this law, you have to, your landscape design has to incorporate a certain percentage of compostable waste and all this stuff. When we buy the single-sided reports that we're getting, this paper has to be, this thing is onerous beyond. It says that the town of Paradise must buy all of our paper goods that are at least 30% recyclable material. It's absolutely onerous. There's no money, and nobody knows. The bottom line is to be compliant, we have to just adopt the ordinance, make it, update our ordinance, and incorporate all this legal language.
But we're not enforcing
Yeah, there is no enforcement. There's also a provision
It comes. It's not like we don't
Enforcement is going to come.
Oh, absolutely. Unless something changes at a state level, right? That you have enough people
Oh, yeah, I'm waiting for that. Yeah, that's going to happen.
Yeah.
A lot of people are working on trying to get a change. A lot of people.
If, so I If every town just said no, what's the state going to do? I mean, really? Scott, can you, are we really risking much just refusing to do this?
Susan can't get through her.
The short answer is I don't know. And let me tell you, the risk here is, the risk is that you get a lot of money from the state. You will become ineligible for grants. The first thing they'll do is they'll start shutting off faucets of money. You'll become ineligible for grants. At the end of the day, they could ultimately say, well, we're going to withhold not just, you don't get any grants. You don't get any other of these, I'll use the term buckets of money. At the end of the day, they could, in theory, withhold sales tax revenue. They could withhold, they could direct the county to withhold property tax revenue. Would they do that? I doubt it. But now, I will tell you candidly, you mentioned something. What if we all just say no? The problem with that ideology, and I will tell you from personal experience, in another setting having nothing to do with cities, but with school districts and enforcement of some regulations, everybody pounds their fists and says, what if we just say no? The number of people that actually say no
Right.
is very small. So they cave. And so you end up sticking your neck out, and the others will step on it as they walk over you. And so I, I wish I had better news, but I will tell you, you'll always get it straight. I would love that others would say, yes, we're all going to band together and say, we're not doing this. And in that situation, the state couldn't do any. They couldn't enforce it.
Okay, so, you're not dumb in this presentation. Go ahead, and I'll ask you a question.
No, I'm all ready for you.
Thank you. What if the worm farm, we have the worm farm right down the hill. Would they take that and use it? I mean, I would think that'd be right down their alley.
Okay, so
Well, I'll permit them. They can have permission.
Let me go ahead and tell you what you want to say.
So one of the problems is this is obviously written for large cities. And they don't, they wrote it, that's what they wrote this for, because there's so much food waste in the large cities. They want to try to recycle it, they want to try to compost it, and things like that. I think for us, and I get all of your frustration, we have been meeting on this with the solid waste team for a while. We do have some avenues. You know, we have organic farmers that farm almonds and walnuts down the hill. There are some ways that we could use this. It's just going to be really onerous, and I don't know at this point. I mean, unless we get CalCities to fight back as a group, I think that's the only other option we have. Otherwise, for us here, you know, there are some options for us to get rid of the mulch.
So you guys are meeting with them. Are they going to have to have a whole truck just designated for that?
Yes.
So there will be a cost to the consumer in Paradise for the waste?
Absolutely.
And we tried to, the first approach, I mean, I was looking at it like, okay, great. We'll just put it in with our green waste, and we'll be done. But for whatever reason, they don't want to do that because they want to try to recycle the food. Well, if you're in a rural area like ours, there's no recycling. They have, they do have areas where they collect like school lunches or things like that that are unused. They're able to go through the food, repackage it, and repurpose it for homeless or other things. It's pretty incredible what they have done. It just doesn't fit what we're doing up here.
So it's going to be a sterile composting truck? I mean, it's got to be one just for composting?
It's going to be, it's going to be in the green, it's going to be in the brown card. It's going to be commedible. There's no place to take it yet. I mean, and there's different levels of, and we don't know, the state doesn't even have it all figured out. We're just obligated to, because it's a law, that we have to update our ordinance. And I would suggest, my suggestion is, because there's so much unknown, and there's a lot of pushback, and they are working on it, Cal, and a lot of people are working on it. And the state is even saying, well, we don't know yet. Is it, if we have to adopt this sample language, this is their language. So we update our ordinance with this language. But I would add a statement at the beginning of it, and I'd make it part of the ordinance, that this, I would use the word onerous, unfunded mandate that does not work or apply in rural California, rural cities, you know, and especially to us survivors of the 2018. I would put all that in there and then make that a part of the ordinance to kind of send a message. Our hands are tied, like Scott says. At some point, there's not enough people, Red Bluff's mad, everybody's mad. Napa, that has a recycling facility, they've been doing recycling in Napa for a number of years. There's all kinds of onerous things that are going to happen. Everybody's garbage rates are going to be up. It's, but we're going to have to do it. We're going to have to adopt this garbage into our ordinance, you know. But I think, the only hope I can offer is that it's a law that doesn't have any way to work yet, you know. So these dates, you know, I mean, these dates are going to get pushed out because there's no facilities. And part of the law is you can only take it to a licensed facility, and you can only get it from there. And there's a couple of things that are working, there's a lot of more information, but for the expediency of time and everything, this is a bitter pill. We have to just give her, we have to change our ordinance so that the state leaves us alone, at least for right now. That's my opinion.
So to speak to what you'd mentioned, Greg, that's one of the things we have here about the unfunded mandate, is that, yes, there'll be rate changes to the customers, but we don't even know what that is yet because is it going to be the cost of hauling it to a transfer station at the landfill? Or is it going to be that we have to actually drive it to a facility that's outside of our jurisdiction? Because that's probably a pretty big cost difference. We just don't know yet. And that's what's so frustrating about this, when the infrastructure's not there yet. We don't know the ultimate impact. But I don't want to say it falls on deaf ears because I'm sure they hear it all the time. But there just hasn't been any discretionary leniency in that thus far.
Thank you.
So beginning this year, CalRecycle starts their oversight. So it started with approving our notice of intent to comply. All the other jurisdictions, including Butte County, also had to file for one as well. They oversee and monitor our compliance with those notices, right? Because everybody had a different phased timeline. And then at the end of our corrective action plan, whenever that works out to be, we've asked for it at least until the end of 2025. Then they can start issuing the jurisdictional violations to us.
Which, if there's even a facility in the North State to take this, the landfill was planning to do composting there. They got turned down. Turned down a permit. They said, no, you can't do it.
So they mandated, but then they tell you you can't do it.
Yeah, yeah, no. I mean, Alderman Wood has been composting for a long, long time. I don't know that he's permitted to do food scrap. He's been battling, it's the Water Board, the biggest violator. And he's had one heck of a time trying to get farmers in the, down in the valley to switch from chemical fertilizers to, I mean, he's got a few. It's taken an educational thing. This, the state is going to, these timelines, this onerous bill, it's going to get relaxed. It's going to get amended because it's not workable the way it is. And every jurisdiction is being given these extensions, what we heard today from other vendors that have facilities that are, it's just interesting.
Is there any cards? Probably are, right?
Well, like Susan said, we've been involved with the local task force in Butte County for years and years and years. And this has come up, but we never thought that five years ago that this would actually be an ordinance that we have to comply with. And unfortunately, CalRecycle's position is they want nothing to do with this. It's on you. What kind of help is that from our state? I mean, that's a bunch of bunk.
It's hard to believe, huh?
Yeah. I know. Were you in the symposium with the 600 other people? Two weeks ago? Okay. So here's all these, many of them are landfill operators, 600 people with CalRecycle's symposium. They say, we've been a linear economy for so long, we need to change it to a circular economy. It shouldn't cost anybody anything. In other words, food waste has some value in the right hands. If they can make money out of it, we shouldn't have to pay so much to process it that way. You should get a benefit back from it. Wherever the benefit goes, it offsets some other thing that we're paying for, such as artificial fertilizers, which is not good in our agriculture environment, to more natural elements, which is good for our agriculture elements. Anyway, they came up with three proposals for compliance. Food rescue. Food rescue, meaning when the stork can no longer sell it, somebody should be able to collect it and still get some use out of it. Composting and biofuel. There are currently no facilities in California that can handle the volume of waste in any of those categories anywhere in this state. Maybe we could bury it in Nevada. Cost of trucking yet that far? It's possible. There's one city in Southern California takes their garbage to Nevada. Biofuel facilities are somewhat fussy about what they burn, but with the right mix of organics, they can produce electricity or biochar, which is good soil amendment, or hydrogen gases fuel, all of which are expensive to build. There's none up here. None. We're a few ways off, months, maybe, years, before we do have one, maybe. Maybe across the street from the landfill, maybe. Gardeners are aware of the benefits of compost, but it's rare to find any gardener that compost all their organic waste material. I met one, I met one from Idaho that actually buys rotisserie chicken at Costco, dries the bones, grinds them, and puts them back into their soil, bone meal. What a process for a homeowner to go through. We would never find anybody to do that commercially to get rid of something like that. But everybody loves Costco rotisserie chicken. Eat the chicken, what do you do with the bones? It's a food waste. And food rescue means finding sources that collect and distribute food that retailers can no longer sell. There are no facilities doing that successfully. What are the penalties for non-compliance? This is a very big Gregor, but just let me give you one example. There's a very successful restaurant, let's say it's in Chico. The guy does really well, 1,000 meals a day. Ah, he's in non-compliance. CalRecycle fines him, $1,000 a day. What does he do? He raises the price of a meal, a dollar. Solves the problem. Pay the fine.
Even if we finds a place to put the stuff, and even if we got money to pay for some part of it, you still have all the paperwork and everything else that's going to cost somebody to tell the state what we're doing, how we're doing it, and all that stuff. I mean, it's a no-win. It's absolutely
Part of the enforcement thing in this law speaks about the towns or cities' organic, it's a new position
Yes.
of at least one person, if not more. It's just, this thing is
I'd like to see the title on that position.
Yeah. I started this in 1996 when I worked for StopWaste.org. It was very difficult to find any community that wanted to adopt any kind of an ordinance where they would do anything deliberately. It was all sort of, we suggest this. Well, if you suggested, okay, we'll try that. But nobody wanted to put anything in writing and do anything deliberate. No. Because if they didn't do it, then they got caught, they're going to get fined or something. It's just, there's no good answer to this. And you're right, we're not going to get enough people to say, no, we ain't doing it.
So is there anybody else who wants to talk? I'm sorry.
That was the only card I have.
Can I make a motion? I'm done talking. This stupid thing is ridiculous. I move acceptance of whatever this composting You can add anything, you make the motion.
There you go. It's on your screen, so you can just read it.
Introduce an ordinance. Yeah, whatever. Okay. I'm good. That's my motion.
I'm sorry.
It's just ridiculous. It's sad. It's not you, Susan. I appreciate what you're doing. And it feels like, I know it feels like you're getting beat up, but
No, I have the same absolute sentiments.
Everybody should write to their congressman, their assemblyman, state. And that's what we need to do, put pressure on it because it's got to change in Sacramento. You know, if you have friends that are of the other party, get somebody, get them to change it. Because everybody's in California, I believe California, everybody's working on it. This is bad, bad, bad.
So the motion was by Boland and seconded by Cullaton, correct?
Yeah, with prejudice or whatever they say. I'm trying to be more positive, but, you know, I'm pretty angry.
So does the council agree to include language that Woody stated earlier? Or not? Or do you want to just put with prejudice? It wasn't part of the motion? Okay. So just, okay, so It wasn't part of the motion. Okay. So just to, just, okay, so just to, okay.
I'll push it, I say he's in.
He's in, okay. Consider, okay, so read, waive the first reading of Town Ordinance Number 619, and read by title only, and introduce Town Ordinance Number 619, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Paradise, amending tax regulations within Paradise Municipal Code, Chapter 8.08, and adding Article 1 regarding mandatory municipal MSW recyclable material and organic waste disposable reduction consistent with new state law requirements. Roll call, vote. Vice Mayor Boland?
Uh, yeah. Yes, whatever.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jones?
No.
Councilmember Tryon?
No.
And Mayor Crowder?
No pressure.
Yes, welcome to California.
So the motion passes, the ordinance passes, since it was not unanimously approved, it will come back on consideration next month?
You're kidding me. We've got to hear this again?
I'm not.
We gotta, we gotta do this again?
We don't need...
Oh my goodness.
No, it can't. It has to come back on consideration, because it wasn't unanimously approved.
That's why she's court of the year.
That's right.
Could take it back.
Item 6B, discuss and consider concurring with staff's recommendation to select Enterprise of Orville to perform arborist services. Colette.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are asking you to concur with staff recommendation to award a contract for the Category 4 Tree Removal Program to P-31 out of Orville, California. So as you know, we have undertaken quite a few different opportunities to remove trees after the campfire. So these are hazardous trees that were so damaged by the fire that they were expected to fall within five years of that disaster. So right after the fire, we removed trees in the, in the public right-of-way that were in immediate danger. We also undertook a government tree removal program, as well as a private tree removal program, to remove hazardous trees that were on private property that were a threat to public and private roads. Now, with those programs behind us, we are now tackling the remaining, the remaining trees, which we consider Category 4 trees. These are trees that are rooted on private property, and that, if they were to fall, were to fall on a private property, onto a living area, a business, or even just a, a property in general, even if it wasn't onto a structure that would consist of a fire hazard. So these are trees that very much need to be removed. They remain a barrier to recovery after the campfire, and it is very important that they're removed. So, the town applied for funding through FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Program to remove these trees. We were awarded funding in Phase 1, which you have heard already. Phase 1 will consist of the environmental process, as well as assessing properties for hazardous trees, and an enrollment process. Once that is concluded, we will move into Phase 2, which is the actual removal of those trees. And so, tonight, we are talking about the Phase 1 assessment portion. So this is a contract for just the assessment of properties. I do want to stress again, this is a voluntary program. This is unlike the government tree removal program, which was mandatory. This program is voluntary. So we will be doing a lot of outreach, letting people know this funding is available. It is a cost-share program, so the property owner would be assisted with 75% of the cost through this grant. They would need to provide 25% of the cost of removal. We are also pursuing additional funding to help with that 25% as well. But as of right now, this is how this FEMA program stands. And so, this contract in front of you tonight, we went out with a, an RFP for this contract, to have a firm that would go and assess properties that enroll. So again, voluntary, enroll to determine what trees need to be removed. We had seven great bids come in, and through a process, we identified P-31 as the top scorer. It was unanimous through our group that, that reviewed them. We're really happy with the experience that they bring, and feel they would do a great job. So that is what we are bringing to you tonight. That is staff's recommendation to award the contract to P-31, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I, I have, well, I brought this up, and, and I was told that this is the arborist portion, but P-31, when they were involved with the tree cutting, was probably the biggest complaint getter that I heard from our citizens during that process. And even, that concerns me a little bit.
I understand. And yes, you are correct. So this contract is just for assessment. So this is just to, with the, with the permission of the property owner, of course, they would need to enroll in the program. These arborists would assess the property to determine what trees would need to be removed through this program. What are the hazardous trees? This is not for the cutting or removal of any trees. That comes in Phase 2, and that will be a whole different process.
So I'm excited that we're at this point. This is, this is cool. I, I hope they learned something on their assessment of trees in our last, I mean, it was amazing how they were dying right behind them, and there was five years. I mean, we were supposed to get trees that we were going to die with in five years.
Yes.
I know this was a unique situation. I got it. And, you know, trees are going down now that are green, and I, and I get that. But I hope they've come up with some new, new science or something to assess these trees. So, anyway, I'm, I'm excited about the fact we're here, but there's got to be some, some lessons learned on that past one.
Yes. And I, I think it's important to note as well, speaking of lessons learned, that this, this program and this process is going to be quite different from what we have done in the past. Even though this is a FEMA program, CalOES is not running this program. We are running this program. So we are kind of taking that, that element out. And so we have a lot more direct oversight of this program. We still need to follow FEMA's rules, of course, but we are the direct oversight of this program, as opposed to CalOES. So I think it'll make it a much more streamlined process.
And I think that's a big issue.
Yes.
Yeah. If we have a say in that, that's going to be bigger than what we did before. So, thank you.
To Greg's point, if, I, I don't know, when you vetted these people, right, so they're arborists, so they're scientists, they know what they're doing. But I mean, like, what happened before. And P-31, my only concern with the company, not necessarily arborists, is I know they rob people. I know they cut down trees, live trees on people's. I know that there are complaints. I know they had to pay people. So I have concerns about the integrity of the company. I mean, but, but it's a good program, and if they're only going to be assessing the trees. But who's overseeing that? I mean, what happens if they say, yeah, this tree qualifies, or they say it doesn't qualify? Who's overseeing that? What is, what is the homeowner, you know, I mean, you got a dead tree, or a tree that's dying. You know, I'd be concerned about that. I'd like to know there's some real oversight. If a person has, say, well, no, this tree's dead. I mean, there's some way to...
Sure. The town is overseeing this program. So the town is in charge of that process, and there will be a process built into this where there is, you know, if, if there is a...
Do we have an arborist program?
Well, no. Well, they are arborists. But if there is a disagreement, we can come up with a process for that. But it is our process. So I guess that's what I want to stress. We don't have to go through CalOES to do another process.
Which is big.
If there are complaints, it is our process.
That's big.
Okay.
It's a big, big dis-
And there's no ROE, like, if they damage anything, because they're just assessing. You know what I mean? Like...
Right. This is different. This is just assessment. There does have to be permission granted to go on the property, but this is different.
But when we did that before, like, if they did any damage on your property, they weren't responsible.
This is a very different program, and, and we can talk more about later, when we get to that, that point of the enrollment form. But it is different from the ROE that you've seen in the past.
Good. I'm glad you guys got it.
Any cards?
I have no cards on this item.
Can I move approval?
Aye, second.
I guess I can.
Motion by Boland, seconded by Jones. Roll call, vote. Vice Mayor Boland?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Thank you for your work, Colette.
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 6C, discuss and consider approving the principles of agreement between the Town of Paradise and the City of Chico. Mark?
I need to recuse myself on this one, so...
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. This item's going to be presented tonight by Ashley Stanley, our principal engineer. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We'll get our PowerPoint up, but again, nice to see you. My name's Ashley Stanley. I'm the principal engineer with Mark Maddox up in the Public Works and Engineering Department. And we're excited to bring the principles of agreement back to you. Couple of months ago, you saw the draft principles of agreement, and they're included in your agenda packet and the fact sheet on the Paradise Sewer Project. And I'll run you through this. A quick review. Again, we've been studying a Paradise Sewer Project, or some version of it, since before the town's incorporation. And we're excited, and you can go to the next one, Mark. I'll, I'll jump through it, and you guys have seen this, so stop me if there's something you want to see again. But I just want to give you a refresher, because all of these processes and milestones that we've been through are bringing us to today, where we have gone through the SERPAC, and the SERPAC has developed the principles of agreement. You've seen them in draft form, and based on the SERPAC's request, they went out for public comment, and to both councils in both the draft and the final form. So these, you, you can go back to that, Mark. That works for me. These are running in parallel to the update that Mark gave you earlier on the draft EIR. So remember that the principles of agreement are going to be formatted into an intermunicipal agreement, which is going to come online once the final EIR is certified. So we're teeing these items up together with the release of the draft EIR. We're in a great place with the principles of agreement, and we're bringing that back to you again tonight. We can go to the next one. So I kind of covered this, but again, the principles of agreement cover all the major items for an agreement. It's modeled based on the City of Chico's municipal code, and their intermunicipal agreement as a baseline. We're sort of in this cyclical cycle here, where we've originated with the Town Council, and those actions that I showed you before, and the history, and creating the SERPAC, and funding the cooperative funding agreement, drafting the principles of agreement. It was a great experience. I saw it starting in October, and it's been pretty seamless, and we've had a lot of great feedback. We've had concurrence at both Town and City Council on the draft principles of agreement, with no major comments coming back to the SERPAC. So we initiated the 30-day public comment period in March and April. We did not receive any comments from the public. So the draft principles of agreement were changed into the final principles of agreement. We've issued that back out. Our Town Council is considering this tonight. The City of Chico Town, City Council considered it last week, and it was approved. And so we're here where the red arrow is, with the final principle, principles of agreement coming back to you all to consider before we start work between the Town and the City on changing those into the intermunicipal agreement. So again, it's the framework for that intermunicipal agreement. Again, last week, approved by the City Council, and we're asking tonight for you all to approve the final principles of agreement that are in your packet. And we can answer questions if you have them. Is there one more slide, Mark? I just wanted to remind you all, and we've been reminding the public as we've gone through this process, that we do have our fact sheets, all of the technical memorandum that are being prepared and issued in support of the draft EIR are available on ParadiseSewer.com. And we keep that up to date, including the draft, and will be the final principles of agreement will be located on the website as well. Any questions that we can answer?
I don't have a question, but I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I would just like to thank Casey Reynolds and Andrew Coolidge with Chico, the mayor and vice mayor of Chico. They were really cooperative, a pleasure to work with. There were a lot of issues to go through. I don't think we had one single disagreement. We just identified issues and figured out solutions that worked for both the Town and the City, and that was such a breath of fresh air. I also want to thank the State Water Board. Clint was great. I was very skeptical of this process. I was one of the people up here who wanted to build my own plant. I didn't want anything to do with Chico. I didn't think they would be fair with us. And I was wrong. And I didn't trust that the State Water Board really had our best interest in, at heart, but he was excellent at identifying the issues we all needed to work through. So I really think that the Water Board is helping both Chico and Paradise get to an endgame that's good for both of us. And so I know there's a lot of angst in the community about, shouldn't we build our own and, and run our own destiny? But really, nobody's going to let us do that, and everybody is trying to help us do this. So I just want to say thank you to everyone involved in the process.
Anybody else?
Go ahead.
Jody, Steve, I would just like to thank the two of you for working through this. I know it's taken a lot of time for you guys to do, and I'm glad that it went well, and it was a good partnership with the City of Chico. So thank you both for your time.
Thank you. And it was a good partnership, and, and I think everybody involved in it, I mean, Kevin was involved in it, and Chico's town manager, and everybody worked for the same goal, and, and this is a win-win project for both Chico and Paradise. So, thank you. Any cards, Tina?
I have no cards on this item.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Cullerton, seconded by Tryon, to approve the principles of agreement. Vice Mayor Boland is absent. Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon? And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need to correct that he's, that he's not absent, that he recused himself?
He's, he's, so he is not up on the dais?
Okay, got it.
He is absent from the vote.
That, that was my hesitation, sorry.
The one who's here is absent.
That was said with love.
Okay. 6D, consider approving the 2022 Storm Drain Master Plan. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor Crowder. This item will also be presented by Ashley Stanley. Thank you.
If you didn't know me before, now you know me. I'm also joined tonight by Harvey Oslig with our consultant, Wood Rogers, who did a significant amount of work on our Storm Drain Master Plan. So...
Harvey, Harvey, can you see our screen, and can you hear me well?
I can hear you well. There's feedback.
Okay, that's good to know. So what I'll do while we're talking, or no, while you're talking, I will mute our microphone, and we'll pause for any sort of conversation with you. So we'll go ahead and start the presentation.
So I'm here tonight with the Storm Drain Master Plan. This was a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant-funded project. It started in 2020 with the RFP and onboarding of the consultant, which is Wood Rogers, and Harvey is here tonight. And we'll do this presentation sort of in the order that a project comes about, initiated by staff and the town. This is an element of the Long-Term Recovery Plan, and then goes to the consultant for all of the work and the modeling, and then it comes back to the town to implement in capital improvement projects. So this is a recovery project. The goal of it is to be a comprehensive analysis of the town's storm drain needs. So this might not get you as excited as the food waste, but it really excites me, so you'll have to hang in there. We're going to look at, we looked at the, you can go back, Mark, one time. We looked at the deficiencies and the options to remedy storm drain issues, so stormwater moving above and across land or in pipes, identifying future development considerations, which is really important with the rebuild efforts and the opportunities for, for new development, identifying projects that can be incorporated into a capital improvement project list, those costs for those potential projects. At the end of it, we end up with a wonderful drainage system base map, which you're sort of seeing some graphics of now up on the screen, and we're going to use those for a long time to come. A full database of our inventory in town, so culverts, junction boxes, excuse me, manholes. So we did that inventory as a part of this process. And then, what's really exciting for us and residents and developments in the town is a full GIS database that's interactive, has a unit- a full GIS database that's interactive, has a user interface, and I'll show you some of the features of that towards the end. We identified 42 projects. Essentially, that list comes down to 38. The numbering list was 42 long. Out of that, 38 of those projects were identified for a potential infrastructure improvement through that capital improvement project, process of $14 million in improvements. And not noted here, but another $5 million of a corrugated metal pipe replacement project and program that would be within the public right-of-way of corrugated metal pipes, the ones that are kind of ribbed that you see in culverts and replacing those throughout time. So the last time a Storm Drain Master Plan came to the town was 1980. It was created in 1970, yeah, 79, the same year we were incorporated. So this is a very dated document. It served us well, but this is a hard copy document that we have a scan of now in 2022. With the new Storm Drain Master Plan, we have an integrated, comprehensive and user interface model that is not just lines on a paper. The documentation and the modeling has just changed so much. And it's also really critical to have done this post-fire because the way that storm water moves is across those surfaces. So with the change of roofs or impervious surfaces, vegetated surfaces versus bare dirt, all of that has been incorporated into the modeling. So it addresses both residential and commercial, rebuilds and new construction, and then, like I mentioned, identifies potential capital improvement projects. So I'm going to hand it over to Harvey and then I'll circle back with you at the end.
All right, Harvey, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Ashley. I'm Harvey Oslick. I'm the project manager for Wood Rogers. And first, I just want to thank the town for giving Wood Rogers the opportunity to assist with the Storm Drainage Master Planning aspects of building back resiliently. My objective over the next few slides is to present some of the elements of the development of the Storm Drainage Master Plan. And though it's a bit hard to see in this vicinity map, one interesting aspect of the storm drainage within the town is that nearly all the runoff in the town originates in the town. There are no streams that drain from outside of the town into the town. There are, however, quite a few streams that originate within the town. And next slide, please. A key source of data for the Storm Drainage Master Plan was the LiDAR topographic data that was collected in 2019. The town has made two-foot contours that were generated from the LiDAR data available on the Rebuild Paradise website. But the source data has much more detail than can be observed in the two-foot contours. You know, so the large map on the slide shows the overall topographic relief through the town with color shading and 100-foot contours. This illustrates how the ground fans out from north to south and creates numerous points of discharge. However, it's the fine detail in the LiDAR data that makes it incredibly valuable for drainage analysis and master planning. The fine detail can be seen in the insert in the top center of the slide, which shows color bounds at one-foot intervals. The details that can be seen in this insert include roadways with roadside ditches running north to south and a stream that flows northeast to southwest into a pond that can be seen to the lower portion of the insert. The drainage analysis was performed with a grid of elevations at a spacing of three feet to accurately define watersheds and flow paths. This detail allowed us to provide realistic depictions of what flooding could look like throughout the town. Next slide. Another source of data for the Storm Drainage Master Plan is the condition assessment that was performed as part of the project. The condition assessment included field investigations at about 240 locations, such as catch basins and manholes and the ends of culverts in order to document the system configuration, material condition, and observed maintenance issues. The data was collected in the field using a system that provides a linkage to the project electronic database. The results of the condition assessment were integrated into the system configuration data that was used for the analysis and to help provide project recommendations. The full condition assessment report is included as an appendix to the Storm Drainage Master Plan. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the general plan land use. That's just one of many inputs into the hydrologic analysis. Land use data was used along with aerial imagery, building outlines, and other information to provide estimates of imperviousness for pre-fire and build-out conditions. Imperviousness is the fraction of the ground that's covered by pavement or, and roofs, and it's a key parameter in computing how fast runoff occurs. All the details for how these estimates were developed and used are provided in the Storm Drainage Master Plan document. Next slide, please. A drainage system map was prepared to show all of the drainage features that were identified in the course of developing the Storm Drainage Master Plan. This map includes culverts, pipes, inlets, manholes, outfalls, and streamlines, includes information about pipe sizes and materials where this information is known. This map includes all the features that were modeled, plus some private storm drainage systems and culverts that were not included in the model. Next slide, please. The pipe network slide, this provides a zoomed-in view to better illustrate the detail in the drainage system map. The full map includes over 23 miles of storm drainage pipes. Next slide, please. The drainage system model consists of two parts. First, there is hydrology that determines the runoff from rainfall, and then there's hydraulic analysis that evaluates the flows through the pipe systems and on the surface, both within and outside of the defined streams. The hydrology involved calculating runoff at 1,100 locations for both pre-fire and build-out conditions for both 10-year and 100-year storms. The hydraulic modeling used what is called dynamic two-dimensional analysis to show how flows would be expected to occur along creeks and streets and other locations. Next slide, please. So one of the products is a GIS database that has all the key input information and the results from the analysis and information about the recommended improvements. This graphic shows a map of flood depth results. This illustrates concentrated flows along streams and locations where floodwaters are predicted to spread out along streets and other locations. And with that, I'm going to turn this back over to Ashley.
Any questions for Harvey quite yet, or can I keep going? We have a couple of slides left. Okay, great. So as Harvey indicated, and just a reminder, the town of Paradise is not a part of the FEMA designated flood zone, it's flood zone X. So what we're talking about is local flooding that exists in the shape that it is today based on all of the inputs that are there today. Over time, it's, it's changed since 1980. And again, it includes the post-fire impervious data that Harvey walked you through. So the exciting part about this GIS database and model and the outputs that we have is that we will use this every day. And it helps us inform interactions with residents and new developments that come in, mostly initiated through the BRC, but I get calls about this pretty much daily, if not multiple times per day. Residents are excited that this new information is coming. One of the topics that we discuss the most is what will be represented in the flood, parcel flood information or parcel flood report. Our Paradise Municipal Code in Chapter Eight, and it's this first bullet here says essentially from that 1980 master plan that we had, that we're superseding, there's designated special permit zones. So outside of the area, FEMA flood zones, right? We're not a part of the FEMA flood zones. The town has designated special permit zones, which are these areas of localized flooding. And so what we have now is an updated model, updated generation of where those locations are based on current data. So what we can do, and this address at 6319 Lucky John is one of the addresses that we had a call about. Someone inquired, hey, am I in the special permit zone? And so in the 1980 master plan, those special permit zones were often wide and not very specific. Sometimes they take up whole parcels. And now we can look at this model output and say that there's a localized part of the site, which typically and always follows the topography. So we can see that there's a drainage course through the site. And we can assist the rebuild or the new development in citing their home appropriately. So outside of that area of sometimes very minimal ponding of three inches, six inches, sometimes up to a foot if there's a creek or other water course there. So we're going to use, or we anticipate using this information to assist anytime there's a proposed or applied for building permit or questions that come in either through the BRC or directly to the engineering department. We do need to update our special permit zone language in the municipal code, and we'll bring that back as soon as we can work with staff to come up with that language, do the public noticing. But it's specifically because there's a reference to the 1980 Storm Drain Master Plan. So we will work together as a staff to update that language and then look forward to being able to implement this and really help homeowners mitigate any risks of localized flooding that are on their parcel early, at the very beginning of the project. And also use it as an opportunity to educate homeowners and parcel owners because there is, even though it's not a FEMA designated flood zone, there is low-cost flood insurance available to homeowners that's voluntary and elective. And if we can push the information out there about the localized flooding, then we can help people get connected with those services because we are also seeing a lot of new homeowners who haven't been through a wet season and experienced actual ponding that could occur on their site. We mentioned this earlier, but one of our major goals and what gets Mark very excited is translating this into a capital improvement project list and database. We need to prioritize this list of 38 projects. We will seek grant funding for the cost of these projects and importantly, improve some of that localized flooding that we see. So these two graphics on the far right, one shows the modeled localized flooding today. And it's somewhat hard to see, but you can see these yellow and purple pipe networks on the right. That's the proposed capital improvement project with an identified cost. And that can sometimes completely mitigate the local flooding or it can at least reduce it. So both getting the information out to the parcel owners so that they can make informed decisions, but also as a town, seek grant funding to improve that local flooding and work hand-in-hand. So again, the action tonight is to consider approving the 2022 Storm Drain Master Plan. The ordinance text will come back to you at the next possible date, either July or August. And so you will see the updated language again, but we'd like to have the Storm Drain Master Plan approved so that we can start using it and helping people rebuild.
So I can't tell you how excited I am about this. And I mean that.
That makes two of us.
I mean that. No, I mean it. Because we have had some properties that are even flown flood zones that.
Sometimes it doesn't make sense.
You'd have to flood the whole valley for that to flood. I mean, it just did not fit and we're going off old maps. So what you're telling us is these old maps are going to be revised. Or at least we're going to look at the new data when we look at parcels for building.
Yeah, so you've experienced what I've seen a couple of times in the last eight months or so of evaluating this, where sometimes a parcel will get flagged and sometimes it's the entire parcel as a special permit zone. And our requirements in the municipal code are that that development provides an engineered letter, either stamped and signed by an engineer, an architect, or a surveyor that describes how the house or the developments mitigate that flooding that in some case doesn't exist. The 1980 plan has served its purpose and we will replace it with the new model.
My last one, he didn't even go out and look at it. He says, I know the parcel, there's no way, I'll write the letter.
Yeah.
So that's how far out of date some of these things are.
We want it to matter.
Right. So you're, you're doing culvert sizing. Now, in pre-fire, if there was a development done, there was a significant mitigation charged to that development for culvert replacement. Are we saying that we're considering those sizings now so we don't have that on any of our developments in town?
Can you speak to that, Mark?
Yeah, sure. I think the question is relating to developer impact fees. Is that correct? That are collected when there's a development that occurs that creates a new impervious area? It goes to an account with the town?
No, no.
Nope.
No. There is, there's been developments where there was actually, there was actually a need to run and go down and actually and upsize a culvert.
So are you talking more about onsite retention to mitigate the runoff? No?
No, it's, it's roads. So my question is, you're sizing these things so the development can go on.
Correct.
We can do these developments, even if someone splits a lot, we're not going to have these horrendous costs for expanding these culverts.
Yeah, I'll let Harvey speak to the actual technical inputs, but it's a 10-year build-out of the development that's expected based on the current zoning.
And while he's doing that, 100 years, is that enough?
The 100-year flood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, is that good enough? Or, I mean, I've heard many times they talk about the 200-year flood, not the 100-year.
Yeah, we'll turn it over to Harvey to, to address those things.
Well, the 200-year flood requirements apply to certain areas of the Central Valley, but the Paradise is not, those requirements don't apply to Paradise. The 100-year is the standard FEMA criteria, but it's not typically that you would design most storm drains for, for that flow rate. Most major streets and most communities are typically designed for a 10-year storm. The, but when you want to try to figure out, well, what's necessary to protect homes, then you start looking and saying, well, we'll evaluate the 100-year and then maybe put a little bit of a buffer above it so that even if a culvert gets backed up a bit or, or you get a little more flow or, you know, just the different uncertainties in it, that the property won't flood. But then that's a matter of, well, let's set the pad elevation correctly. Let's do some localized grading on a site to make sure that there's a flow path around the building. Those are the sorts of things that you, you want to address when you're dealing with like 100-year flow.
So you are 100-year plus a little cushion, you're saying?
I'm sorry. Can you say that again?
You say, you are 100-year plus you have a cushion on top of that for your, your calculations.
No, the, the model results, we have produced both 10-year flow results and 100-year results. When you actually look at the conditions within the town, the, the differences between when we looked at like the, what happens with development in the community, because the soil types that are in the town, there's not a lot more runoff occurs, but it happens faster when, when you pave an area. And so what we're finding, what we're finding is just that development impacts some things local to the development, but when you start going a little ways downstream, it doesn't really have a big impact on flows. But I think there was another part to this question.
I think I can answer your question if you're okay. So there's not a buffer built into the limits of localized flooding, but I think what Harvey was describing is if you came in with a development, and we've been working with homeowners on this every day, they make a proposal on how they would like to cite their home horizontally and vertically.
Sure.
And then that buffer comes in by just, we call it floodproofing, right? You know, if you want to go six inches and just meet. You know, if you want to go six inches and just meet building code, then you have a certain buffer above that base flood elevation that, that's not built in with any buffer. And then you can mitigate that further by site grading and, and other considerations, which you're really familiar with.
Sure.
Does that answer your question?
Well, it sort of does. And, and you guys are the experts, so I'm not, I am not, I am truly not the expert in these things, or the calculations, or anything like that. I just have experience in the field. And I've experienced living up here since 1967, and I have watched some of those 100-inch rain years backed up by another 100 or 120-inch rain year. Then you have an 80-inch, and I'm telling you what, you can see some flooding in this town, like, we've seen a little bit of it at times, we've seen some of it.
Oh, yes.
But we've, I'll tell you what, you go back some years and you see what could happen, I just hope we're taking those into consideration. I hope we have some history of what's happened in the past, because it does not absorb the water. There comes a point up here, it's done, and it is just running off. And it takes out roads, it takes out everything in its path. I mean, it's unbelievable what happens. So just, I know you're the expert, and I'm not questioning you, just take some history into account when you do that, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm glad to hear you mention that, because a lot of times we get the opposite feedback, where maybe people are newer to town, or their home itself, the carpet actually hasn't gotten wet, but if we see pictures or it's been tagged as a flood-prone structure from the 1980 master plan, we have to, to show people that this is a real risk.
Yes.
And I think to your point, when the special permit zones are trusted more, they're not inaccurate, or an empty zone, or no flooding when they're really, when it's flagged as one, then I think we'll start to build that rapport with folks to get them to trust this information. It's a, a much better starting point, both for the single-family developer and for, you know, multifamily developments, that at least now they have a starting point. They could always come to us and say, hey, we disagree with this technical analysis, and here's our technical analysis, because there's these intricacies on a site, and we will review that as a staff. But this gives people a really great place to start, and it gives them an opportunity to mitigate any of that minimal flooding and also make really smart decisions about bigger flooding.
There are some places you won't believe how flooded they'll get on some of these years. And it's, it's incredible. But I'll, I'll say this, and I'll be quiet. It doesn't cost much more to go bigger at this point. You know what I'm saying?
Oh.
It is, it is, there is a cost to it, I get it. But when you're digging it up, when you're doing all that, a little bigger, a little bit more is not going to hurt us, so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Did you want Harvey to expand on why not the 200-year return?
No, that's all right. I, I understand.
Okay.
I just know I've been held to that criteria in certain cases.
Yeah.
I just wondered why that was a difference.
So I have a question on, are, are these new or replacements, or a combination of, of both?
As compared to the 1980 study?
Yeah. I mean, compared to what was in the ground?
Oh, as far as the pipe networks?
Correct.
Some of them are new, and many of them are replacements or upsizing.
Okay. And then what materials are you using on the, like the culverts and things like that?
Harvey can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the corrugated metal pipe replacement program is specifically to remove the use of corrugated metal pipe, which degrades over time. So I think everything is concrete. Did I get that right? That there's, there would be no scenario in which, unless it was an emergency on the public work side, you know, if a trench cuts through a pipe, there could be, still be an instance where we would use corrugated metal pipe as a temporary replacement, but the, the purpose is to circle back around and, and replace all of that metal pipe.
So it's all going to be cement and, and no use of the, of the rubber or the?
Yeah, the plastic. The plastic, the, the plastic pipes are really what we're trying to move away from as a resiliency effort, and we'll talk about that on the next agenda item for the Stearns Road culvert emergency.
Yeah.
Where we have an existing corrugated metal pipe that's failed, it's created an emergency, and we're going to replace concrete. But as many people know in the development community and other, that resiliency costs money, and the concrete pipes are more expensive, they take longer, and they're more difficult to install, it just cascades. So if we're, we're sticking to that, and that's our plan, and that's what's represented in this Storm Drain Master Plan, but it comes at a cost. And so we'll have more on that.
And then one other quick question. I'm sure you've taken this into account, but in these new piping that you're putting in, have you taken into account the natural, like groundwater that's, that's there and the groundwater, like to, to, what am I thinking of?
Well, one example is that with a lot of the underground trenching.
I'm looking at groundwater recharge is basically what I'm, what I'm looking towards.
Yeah, we've, we've seen some areas, and tell me if this doesn't answer your question, where when we open up the ground, there is quite a bit of water, and sometimes it's perched, or sometimes it's seasonal. The, a lot of times when we do the modeling, where we see a need for a piped network in a roadside ditch is also an area that's typically very wet, which makes sense that the ditch is following that pattern as well. The groundwater recharge, a lot of these systems are open systems.
Okay.
And there isn't specific groundwater recharge, but they, they get the water back to a natural drainage course, and it heads out of, out of the area in those natural drainage ways where roads are cutting those off, or maybe they're just not sized appropriately right now.
So you're not changing a natural drainage, you're just, got it. Thank you.
And then the model is going to take some updating over time, and we're going to see a lot of construction in the next five, 10 years, and this model sets itself up to be updated over time.
Thank you.
Ashley, I just wanted to say that I'm really excited too.
Good, we've got three people.
And I want to thank you and Mark and the folks that went after the money that enabled us to do this, because before the fire, we wanted this, but we had no way to make it happen, none whatsoever. And this is a good example of something good that we've been able to do because we could get grants because of the fire, as well as the housing element. I mean, how many years had we pushed that 1980 general plan forward? And we wanted to do a general plan update, but we had no money to do it. So I just appreciate the staff that's gone after the money, that's enabled us to improve our services to our residents. Thank you.
The other thing, if I could, council members, that if, if I can mention, because I don't think that they, they hit this with quite enough fanfare. This will also enable you to be eligible for future grant money to do some of these projects to make improvements. So it's not just getting grant money to do this, this is just the beginning of the, of the grant money that may come in. So really, it really is a...
Yeah, thank you, Scott.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
I was going to say, this, again, thank you to FEMA and the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program administered through CALOES. This is similar to the, think of the early warning system and the advanced planning. That's what the Storm Drain Master Plan is, is the advanced planning of what we need, and they've been communicating along the way to submit our project list as quickly as possible, once this is done and prioritized, to start actually building these. So we're really excited, grateful for our recovery department securing the funds, gosh, back in 2019, I believe that was. So we're excited to move this forward.
Yay.
Yeah.
Deanna, cards?
I have one card from Ward Habriel.
Thank you again. I want to address something that follows along with this, and culverts at 1655 Hollybrook, I've talked to Mark about this. Four times in the last three months, a mapper has been to that property to look for a damaged culvert. There ain't one. But four times, somebody's been there, that I know of, maybe more, three in the last two weeks. That's, that's a little overkill. I don't know how much they get paid, but these mappers show up, and frankly, their map's not right. It shows a culvert where it doesn't exist. And I know why, but they won't believe that, and it doesn't show on the map that way. You probably know, there was three acres at the end of Hollybrook that was a commercial nursery until many years ago. They had a weir dam in Dry Creek. When it flowed year-round, they pumped the water out, and that's how they irrigated the nursery. When Gate Lane was built, the Dry Creek dried up. So it does not run year-round anymore. Goodbye nursery, and they're gone. Some of the apple trees are still there on House property, but not at 1655 Hollybrook. However, when these people show up, they don't come up and knock on the door and say, I'm from a mapping group that's looking for a damaged culvert, I'm going to be walking to the end of your yard. No, they don't do that. They just traipse right down to her. Even if they walk through a freshly planted area and trip over some of the fresh plants that were put in. And they don't apologize or anything. They just say, well, I'm looking at the diagram here, and it shows that there's a culvert that goes this way. Well, I know why there's no culvert there. When the nursery was there, they did not want street runoff going into their weir dam that they irrigated with. My gosh, does that make sense? It sure does, if you knew what they were doing way back then. The culvert goes someplace else. There's an easy way to find it. You put a camera in there, like the Army Corps of Engineers did, and you find out where the tube goes, where the T is, and where it actually comes out. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
No, there's no motion.
Yes, there is.
There is.
Move to approve master plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Tryon, seconded by Jones. Roll call, vote. Vice Mayor Boland.
Very grateful, thankful, yes. Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
All right, just to close, I want to say thank you, Harvey, and the Wood Rogers team. You've done an excellent job, and thank you, Ashley, for the wonderful presentation. All right, thanks, Harvey. Good night.
Thanks.
Okay. Six E.
Goodbye.
Consider adopting the attached resolution number 2022...
Oh goodness.
Oh goodness.
It is 40.
Forty?
Forty, yeah.
Thank you. A resolution of the Town Council of Town Paradise declaring an emergency and authorizing repair or replacement of the Stearns Road culvert. Mark?
All right, thank you, Mayor Crowder and council. This actually is quite appropriate to follow the previous agenda item for the Storm Drain Master Plan. And I thought the night would be a little bit later, so I thought you would appreciate an agenda item and a slide. And here we go. Okay, so we have a 72-inch steel culvert along Stearns Road, the part that winds behind or south of Pearson, certainly not east of Pence. We have a 72-inch culvert, it's about 40 feet long, and it crosses Dry Creek, and it has rusted failures throughout, similar to what we were talking about on the previous agenda item for the replacement program. Steel pipes fail, and they rust out, water and steel don't mix. So we, it's caused voids, soil migration, it's really complex, and we don't fully understand how, but they've propagated all the way to the surface around the pipe, and even showing, the pipe is actually showing some failure in the middle, that the stability around the pipe is compromised, and now there's a potential that it could collapse from the top. So the road on Stearns is closed as a result, and that's causing a problem and concern and anxiety of our community about any asset for a potential evacuation during a wildfire event. So we are asking council to declare an emergency that would allow us to remedy the problem, restore the evacuation capacity as soon as possible by bypassing traditional bidding and project development timelines. If we were to try and do this on our own, at, at the standard rate of what is expected, this could be a year-long effort to get this pipe replaced. With that, we're proposing to work with Visononi Construction or Arnar Horn. We're not asking to just do a one-time bid, sole source, let's get it done no matter the price. We're vetting some projects, we're trying to be creative and efficient and make the best replacement as possible. But regardless, for that concrete pipe, it does take longer, especially right now, it's six to eight weeks at a minimum to get that pipe here. We want to work with either of them, we're projecting that to be about $228,000 or less to get this done. We've checked with the Storm Drain Master Plan on the pipe sizing for 72-inch, it does not need to be upsized, this is appropriate, but we are going to include some riprap and some stabilization to make sure that there's no future erosion or anything like that that could compromise the pipe. We've considered temporary fixes that would be cheaper, but the truth is, is that the pipe could still fail in two, five, 10 years. And so if we're going to be spending this kind of money, we need to replace the pipe, get the metal out, and put the concrete in. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is there, is there concerns with the upstream debris filling that? And are you mitigating those issues? I mean, there's so much debris on the ground with everything that's going on.
Well, without street sweeping and with, with the lack of vegetation, we're seeing a lot of silting in of all of our culvert pipes. So that's why restoring the street sweeping is important and building these projects. This specific location didn't have a lot of silt. Its, its main day-to-day operation, the flow looks great, it's, it's relatively low in this big pipe. But from that last conversation, our real flooding problem isn't the traditional flooding that you see on the valley floor, it's the speed and intensity of that flow coming through the pipe. That's why we need the 72 inches. Otherwise, it looks today it could handle, you know, 12-inch, you know, 24-inch pipe. Would be fine for the flow today, but for that 10-year storm, 100-year, we need the 72 inches. So that's the plan here.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other questions for Mark?
As a part of the emergency, we'll report back, we, we are required, and we will report back monthly on this item until it's closed and resolved. So you'll, you'll see more of this.
I'll move acceptance.
All right.
Second.
No. Any cards, Deanna?
No cards.
Okay.
Motion by Boland, seconded by Tryon. Roll call, vote. Vice Mayor Boland?
Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Consider, six F, consider adopting resolution number 202241?
Correct.
Resolution of the Town Paradise awarding contract on system roadway rehabilitation. Mark?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Crowder. I'm doubling the slides here, I've got two for you. So as you are fully aware, we've secured $93 million for public road repairs due to the campfire damage, and we are sequencing our work behind the undergrounding efforts. Our first project is Skyway between Crossroads and Westchester, right near Holiday Market. After receiving four bids, we have, we are proposing to award the contract to Knife River, who happens to be the same contractor doing the work along Skyway for Butte County between Chico and Paradise. Their work is wrapping up. We are looking to award this contract in the amount of their base plus additive one bid, which is essentially the same scope as the base bid of the pavement rehabilitation. Additive one bid was an optional additive that we wanted to evaluate the cost to put this work wholly at night, all items of work to be done at night. And that's to address some of the evacuation concerns, the, the traffic impact concerns, working along this major corridor, business interruption concerns. So we're really trying to work here and get this job done at night for the temporary inconvenience of, of noise, but for the long-term benefit of getting it done and getting it done quickly. So we're looking to take Knife River up on the additive bid one for a total bid amount of $5,069,864.78. Our local match for this project is 1.3 million, but it's still anticipated for CDBGDR infrastructure, and we're going to hear back on that by the end of this month. But again, this is our first project where, as it's approved through the FHWA and CALOES on and off-system FEMA projects, we have a local match. But we've submitted these applications, we're confident they're going to come through and yield that kind of backfill of those match projects, or I'm sorry, match funds for these types of projects. So we're not asking to award the 93 million with a potential match of, you know, 20 million. We're asking to award this one contract with a match of 1.3 million that we do have an unmet need, and that's been communicated, and we're going to hear by the end of the munch, I'm sorry, end of the month, that that, I might be hungry. So that, we're going to hear by the end of the month that we will be able to use those funds for our local match requirement. So if we award tonight, we could start as early as July. There's a lot of work involved with this project. It's not going to be as straightforward as what you've seen on Skyway for Butte County, where it's, it's blow and go, you know, grind and pave. It's going to, we've got signals to modify, we've got concrete ADA ramps to upgrade, we can't do this work without upgrading some of those ramps. So it's more complex, it's going to take longer, but if we do it at night, it's going to lower, lower the impact. So second slide, we have also, this project area includes restriping of Skyway downtown to have two outbound lanes, southbound, or I guess westbound, depending on your perspective, one center turn lane and one northbound lane. And that was through an arduous process that we undertook through the transportation master plan and options presented to council, and direction was given, that we are going to modify the downtown, keep the parking, keep the ADA bulbouts everywhere except for at modify the downtown, keep the parking, keep the ADA bobouts everywhere except for at the two signals at Skyway and Elliott. Moving on, there's a couple of notes here that really need to be communicated, they're in the agenda packet. This project was identified really because it was the first one that's wholly complete for undergrounding. Most of the project area was already undergrounded before the fire, but as you see, the work in front of Town Hall and along this corridor is wrapping up. So we're coming in literally almost to the day as quickly as we can behind it. And that's the type of approach we look to take in 2023, four and five. But here gets the hard part. PID will have cut-ins for service laterals based on rebuild activity on this and future projects. It's unavoidable. The town will have cut-ins for the sewer project if it advances beyond the EIR. Risk of waiting could jeopardize our townwide funding for the roads. The sewer could not advance, the sewer could take longer, but we'll mitigate all of these impacts by cutting into the new road if we have to, by including additional road rehab in those new pavement areas because we have standards that require it. Require it of developers that build on new roads, we can require it of ourselves and comply with our own rules. That's our plan. The work will be at night, stand downs during red flag warnings. We modified our bidding documents to include that contract language that says if the National Weather Service declares a red flag day, we can require our contractors to stand down and not work. That will be at our cost, but we do believe that this is something that's important to the community about evacuation capacity and impacting fire season and moving forward effectively. Last, our next road project that we've come forward for award like this will be in 2023, and this is about a four-and-a-half mile job, we're looking for 30 miles in 2023, and we're really excited about that. So with that, I'll be able to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
So you have to have that bobout at Pearson done before this starts, right?
Yes, and so the delays on the bobout on Pearson are related to drainage, imagine that tonight. There was a drainage, if you recall, a channel, and we had to return a prefabricated channel. And so we've had issues with backstocking that and getting the right solution approved. We also had some issues with our signal bolts, and so we did some rebar cage modifications. But now we're waiting for bear to come back and re-mobilize. We're at a day where our patience is a little thin about working days, and you start charging those working days again, that say if you don't come back and finish this job, we're going to start charging you for it or deducting from your payment. And that really gets their attention, but we're confident they're going to be back very soon and finish that. That will be done before we start paving 100%.
Good, they're losing their forms if they don't get going on it.
Yes.
Any other questions for Mark?
Good job, Mark. That thing, I'm not concerned about the PID and then cutting in, because the new roads are going to be reconstructed, and so it's going to be a lot better. And plus, like you mentioned, which a lot of people don't realize, years ago, we upgraded our standards.
Yes.
And now we have the workforce and everything else and expertise to make sure that they're enforced. So when somebody cuts into the road, they don't get to just throw a little patch in there, they got to fix it.
That's correct.
So it's going to be good.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, man.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Deana, card?
I have a card from Ward Habril.
Well, this is an issue where every single person in town that's driven to Chico and back has seen the quality of work of Knife River. I believe everybody in town needs to stand up, give you and Mark a standing ovation. This is exactly the kind of things that the people want. That quality of work in our streets is exactly what should happen here. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, it's coming.
Going to miss all the bumps and stuff.
What'd you say?
Going to miss all the bumps and everything.
Oh, there'll be some, there'll be more.
Yeah, I mean dodging and, you know, keeps you alive, man.
Driving the center lane anymore?
No, no.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Jones, seconded by Cullerton. Roll call vote, Vice Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Councilmember Cullerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Tryon?
Aye.
And Mayor Crowder?
Aye.
Thank you.
So item 7A1, discuss changing the Town of Paradise ordinance number 618 prohibiting the use of power tools potentially defined as metal-bladed power tools that could cause combustion during a red flag warning issued by the Weather Service. And this is something I brought up, over the last couple of years, I've seen things and Chief Solan and I have talked about it. One incident was on a red flag day at about 4:00 in the afternoon, there was a gentleman out mowing a couple acres of dirt weeds, and Cal Fire came out and said, hey, you know, this really isn't wise to do. And his response to them was, well, I've got another couple of hours to go and I'm not quitting. Well, our ordinance, we can't make him stop. The other one on a red flag day was somebody welding in a driveway in a gravel with a bunch of weeds on an old tractor. And same thing happened. Cal Fire came out and said, hey, this isn't a good idea, so we have no teeth. So not trying to stop regular construction, but people working on lots, a lot, a good part of these lots, they have no water. So if they did start a fire, there's no way that they have to put it out. Most people don't bring water with them. There was a, I saw a guy show up with a tractor a couple lots away from my house on a red flag day with a brush mower on the back and no water, no nothing. So I'm looking for staff to come up with something where we could tweak the ordinance, you know, stupidity ordinance or something that on a red flag day, you're not going to get out there without a source of something to stop a fire if it happens. So that's one thing after talking to our chief was, they thought the easiest solution might be to tweak that ordinance just enough where we could put teeth and you go out and you say, hey, this isn't a good idea to do. And if they say, well, I'm not going to stop, you can say, well, no, now we can make you stop. So that's what I'm looking for.
So you're asking staff to come back with an ordinance?
Well, a suggestion of how we can do it without, you know, shutting down, I'm not looking to shut our rebuilding down or anything like that, you know, more on a private level of block clearing and things like that on the red flag day. So that's what I'm looking for. You were going to say something, Jody?
I'm not opposed to the idea. I think a lot of thought needs to go into defining exactly what it is so that it doesn't have the unintended consequences of interfering with normal construction of homes and that sort of thing.
If you've seen the TV ad that Redding does, it's, you know, on a red flag day, you know, no metal blading, no cutting after 10:00 in the morning and things like that. And it is geared more towards, you know, the residents rather than the construction, and that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I kind of tend to agree with Jody about, we don't want to shut, because one of the things, I have a friend that has, they got burned out on Elliott above Clark, and their lot had some weeds on it, and he got his letter from the fire department. So he came up to fix his water or weed eater and spray some Roundup. He had water, he has a water meter and he had water. He did not have a backflow device put in or anything. They bought a house down in Gridley. His neighbor had a backflow. So when he came, he used water to charge his hose up, so in case, you know, he started a fire, also to wash off the Roundup when he was spraying and stuff. And he came up last week and he has no water. It's been shut off. He pays for his meter to be there, and the water's been there for two years, and now it's shut off. And like, I don't know, you know, it's kind of like PID, we got a lot of fire danger out here, you know? Maybe they, you know, people are paying the fee to have the water, the lateral, if it wasn't burned up, and like his still has a meter there, the old meter, had water there until about three months ago.
The tough part, I noticed this year, is the weekends, it seems like it's windy every weekend.
Every day.
Yes.
And some people only have weekends to come up and do their grubbing or whatever they're doing. I don't disagree with what you're saying, I just, and I do want to hear from the experts, but I don't want to stop people from cleaning their lots either. I want to get them, get the weeds down.
We're giving them tickets for being there.
Right, so that's going to be a fine line, and maybe you guys have the great solution for this.
So I could suggest a couple modifications we could make to the municipal code during red flag events if that was the decision of council. One would be to prohibit operations of red flags, like barbecues, open fire pits, the use of source of heat and open flame outdoors, cooking and power equipment, you know, like we, mowers and trimmers. We could even go further and do some operations that we do of, out of the fire code, we issue operational permits for like hot work and that type of thing. You don't really even see like PID uses, but they're under the Public Utility Commission. But we have outdoor welding when you do construction, pyrotechnics, explosives, the little lesser ones that we issue, but we could also prohibit those during a red flag event if that's your choice.
I understand that, I just hate to become a community of laws and restrictions. I mean, I get we need to be mindful of fire, and I hear what Steve's saying, but, you know, I mean, if I have a lot and I buy a vacant lot and it's all overgrown, I mean, some of the commercial lots, they're going to hire somebody to come in there, or maybe they're going to rebuild. So they come in, if you've got a backhoe or, you know, or a piece of heavy equipment with metal blade, you can hit a spark and on a windy day, you can catch this town on fire. How many incidents have we had in this town since the fire of people using metal-bladed lawn mowers or anything? How many fires have been started in this town? People cleaning their lots? I mean, I get it, you got a neighbor welding on a windy day, but I don't know, I just want to make more laws, more fines, more stuff.
You had a pretty big one on Neal Road that could have got away, and that was started with a weed eater. And it got, I forget how many acres it got, but there were a lot of homes that were threatened there, there were helicopters there. And, you know, I'm not one for a bunch of laws either, but I'll tell you what, I'm not for the town burning down again either. And I think that a lot of these lots don't have water on them.
That's right.
And if you're, you know, so how are you going to put something out?
But they have.
We do, oh, I'm sorry. I say currently, we do have on the books, it's a public nuisance if it's a fire hazard as determined by the fire marshal or the fire chief. You know, certainly we do already have that on the books that we could then cite that individual.
So, I mean, I understand where we're trying to get at. And I think if we, number one, I don't know, to use the term red flag warning, do all of our residents know when that's happening and when that's taking place? I think that might be part of it. I think the other part of it is, you know, if they have some type of a mitigation, they're like, if they have water on site already and they're trying to clean their lots, I mean, I understand what Councilman Boland is saying is, a lot of people work full-time and so their only opportunity to come up here is on the weekend. If that doesn't, if that coincides with the red flag warning, I think that, you know, we need to give them some type of an out, whether it's having water there or something else, that they can still clean their lots, because otherwise, we're sort of putting them in a position of, we're fining them for not taking care of their lot, they can't take care of their lot on the times they can. You know, I think we just need to try to make it as easy as possible for our residents to do the right thing.
Sure, effectively, we really need just something to say that, hey, this activity's hazardous and it's not safe to do, we need to stop doing what we're doing and be able to enforce it. So it's going to be hot and dry all summer long, we understand that, but it's the red flag days that are really of concern, so.
And I mean, honestly, if anyone's out there doing anything like that, and any of you guys come up and say, hey, you shouldn't be doing it, they should just stop.
Well, they should.
You know, I mean, just end the story.
We need a mechanism that'll help enforce that.
So what would you like to see?
Well, we can come up with some suggestions, but really something that just would help enforce the, us to have somebody stop the hazardous activity. We don't want to eliminate somebody's progress, because there's a lot of work to be done.
Right.
And there's no need for us to stop that, we just need some sort of mechanism to help assist, keep everybody safe.
But let's say that we pass an ordinance, we say, red flag day, you can't do any of this stuff, right? Let's say that we do that. And now Steve's neighbor's out there with a metal-bladed lawnmower doing something, and he calls up the town, Tony goes out there and he says, oh, you can't do that, you know? And the guy just says, nah, don't bother me, you know? Here's your citation. Now he's got 10 days to appeal it. I mean, you know, I don't know how you make it to where you can go out and say, stop or arrest him, you know what I mean? Because that's the other piece of this thing. We make a rule and then there's this due diligence that the citizen has, you know, we have to send them a letter, you know, and all this stuff. It's, I mean, if we can come up with something that will give you guys, whether it's a police chief or the fire marshal, you know, the ability to go out there and say, you must stop. I mean, like, if I'm speeding and a cop pulls me over, I got a headlight, I mean, he can stop me from driving, you know? He can arrest me and take me to jail. You know, our ordinance is in the violations the way it's written. We give you a citation and we send you a letter and we do all this crap. I don't know how effective an ordinance outline it would be. I mean, part of it's education, but somehow to where you have the authority to, because it's a danger, you know, extreme danger, you can just say, you must stop, period. I mean, confiscate their lawnmower, their weed eater, you know? I don't know.
Those cases are relatively infrequent. You know, most often the time, we go out to somebody and we talk to them, and we're able to explain what their concern is, and problem goes away.
Yeah.
So they're rarely a problem, but we just, there are cases where we need to have some sort of mechanism to enforce and keep everybody safe.
I'd be up to seeing an ordinance, have them bring it back to us and see what, you know?
Some of the stuff.
Chief and, what's your title now, battalion?
I'm the battalion chief.
That's right, battalion chief. Chief and battalion chief, okay. Have them bring it back and let's look at it. I mean, we want to do the right thing, and I agree, I don't want a bunch of laws, I totally agree. And if you guys feel like you need a tool, let's hear what they have to say.
Is there some way that we can write something to where, like the fire marshal or the fire clerk, pardon, has the authority in a, like on a red flag day to stop an activity? You know, without it being like a violation of a code, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, not without.
Not without making it a violation of the code, they can't just, I mean.
But can we make it a violation that instead of getting a normal citation and that whole process to work, they can stop an activity? We'll look at that, bring that back to us. When'd you figure it out?
Yeah, I would, the short answer is, yes, you can, but again, it's a violation of some code that you, in order for them to say, you have to stop this activity, it's got to be some violation of a code or an ordinance.
Where the code is written in such a way that that particular violation has an immediate enforcement effect, you know?
Sure.
That's the kind of thing. I think that's what you're looking for.
You want to be able to arrest them if they don't comply.
Right, or take their weed eater away, yeah.
Yeah, that would work.
You know what I mean? Where you could stop.
The problem with confiscating property is you immediately get into all kinds of Fourth and Fifth Amendment issues. It would be, you know, again, there may be some alternative things where you can require fire extinguishers to be there, or, you know, I mean, there may be some alternative measures where, okay, if you don't have water, then you have fire extinguishers, or you have something that, I don't know.
Or, how about this? If you guys come up in the fire truck and you say, hey, it's a red flag day, you can't do that, and I'd say, well, no, I'm going to keep doing it. Okay, then we're obligated by code to sit here while you finish, and it costs you X dollars an hour for me to be here while you finish mowing a lot. Just a thought, just trying to think outside the box.
Some sort of cost recovery. The problem is, and it's not a problem, but it ties up a resource.
Yeah, no.
And you can't collect the money.
And we weren't, I don't think we were talking about putting in a complete new ordinance.
Sure.
I think we were talking about just tweaking the one that we had, where we could put language in there to accomplish this.
And talking with Tony Lindsey, it sounds like that we'll be able to come up with something. Is that correct, Tony?
Tony's always good, he's coming up with ideas. He can do it, Lord.
We'll work in.
Bring some back to us.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, going along with that, you know, in the light of that situation, I would like to see us readdress and relook at our ordinance with GOATs. I mean, I think that's an easy way for people to take care of their issues. And I don't know what, I think we have a two-month thing for GOATs or something like that. And I think maybe we look at people be able to have them for longer than that, and depending on the size of their property, they're able to have however many based on the size of their property that they have, that there's a way of keeping the weeds down and the problem down and not having sparks. way of keeping the weeds down and the problem down and not having sparks.
Seven C, we'll, we'll cover that.
At least I haven't seen.
We'll cover that in seven C, but that'll be, we'll just, we'll just add it to it as a future agenda item. We'll bring that back as a council initiated item for next, uh, next, uh, council meeting.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So, seven B, council reports on committee representation. Greg?
Uh, attended everything I was supposed to, nothing related to report that anyone care about. So, I want to go home.
Yeah, me too.
Jody?
Same.
Woody?
I did the same thing, but I also attended the swearing of our new police officer yesterday and that was fun.
Rose?
Uh, attended my meetings, uh, Butte County Air Quality, solid waste management, seemed like, I don't know, a couple times. And then, um, the first ever goat festival happened last weekend. And speaking of goats, it was pretty exciting. I think they did pretty well. And it's nice for someone like me who has longtime advocated for grazing as a option for forest management. It's nice to see that happening in our town. And, um, I hope that it continues. So.
I attended the League of Cities, uh, conference in, in Sacramento. Collette was there, Kevin Phillips was there, Woody was there. And we actually got to present on, on our wildfire and, and, uh, we got a good reception. And, and I think that was good to get our word out and maybe it'll help somebody else. Um, kind of did the, the normal things, attended my meetings, what have you. I did Friday, uh, had a conversation with Justice Trotter on the, um, wildfire trust. Uh, again, Kevin was on the call, Supervisor Teeter, Assemblyman Gallagher. Um, very disappointed in the initial start of the conversation. It, um, uh, did not really address, I, I think that the justice and, and the rest of us were kind of on a different page of what we were trying to accomplish. And, uh, but the good news to that is, um, the lady that is doing the, administering the claims, Kathy Yanni, did call after and shed some light onto why some of it is taking longer than others. Some is, it's due to medical liens, some of it IRS liens. Um, the private attorneys not knowing that, that the pat answer seems to be when somebody checks on their, their settlement, they're told, oh, it's in the process. Well, they all know that they can make a phone call and they can find out what stage of the process it's in rather than just giving them a pat answer. And for the money that, that these private attorneys are taking, I think they can make that phone call. Um, so hopefully that will, will enable us to, uh, maybe move things along a little quicker. And, uh, there's, there's also hardship cases that, that can be brought to them. So, hopefully with, with her help, we'll, we'll have some, uh, process, uh, going forward.
Do you have another phone call coming with them?
Um, I, I expect to be talking to Kathy Yanni again. I, I have no real.
Nothing set up?
Well, I have nothing set up with her and I don't expect to be speaking.
I'll just say it's disappointing to hear that they're using these liens and all this stuff as an excuse. There, there's too many people that don't have any issues. And everybody's becoming a hardship case at this point. It's taken that long. That is ridiculous.
They're, they're, again, they're, they're trying to work, work through them. And I mean, if you've got an IRS lien and, and that's.
I don't. And I know, most of the people I know don't have any lien journey on them. That's an excuse.
Okay.
That's a way to cut the conversation off. And that's very disappointing to me. That, I'm not mad at you. I'm just saying, this thing is, is drawn out too far and there's no reason, there's no incentive for them to hurry it up. It's better if they extend it out. And I know you know that. I just had to say that.
And you also, i- if, if you've had any contact at all with Ju- Justice Trotter, you, you need to have a way to get, I mean, you can go, you, you can, I mean, we got, we walked away with no answers to anything that was asked.
Surprise, surprise.
And you could really push that, uh, with him. And what would happen is you'd have no communication, period. And I think with this Kathy Yanni, at least in my opinion, I, I think that we do have somebody there that may be able to assist. And, uh, that's.
I appreciate you doing it. I appreciate doing what you're doing. I'm not saying that. I just, you know what I'm saying. I'm just frustrated.
Well, I'm, I'm frustrated too. I mean, I hear it every day. And, you know, but ignoring it or, or making him more angry, he, he gets his feelings hurt very easy, like when the supervisors send him a letter.
Who's over him?
I don't, don't know.
Nobody.
So, anyway.
Did they give you any indication like what their rhyme or reason? Because it seems like, and, and everybody talks about their settlements, but it seems like there's no consistency whatsoever. It's, it's, I, I don't know if it's.
It's consistently inconsistent is what it is.
Exactly. And then, then I notice like, you know, the money's going to the attorneys and the attorneys are actually the ones that cut you the checks. So, I, I'm just sort of wondering, did they give you any indication of this is, this is how we're going about this process or just?
They're, they're, they won't, if you, if you have an attorney, they won't even talk to you. They can't. You've got, they, you've got to go through their attorney or your own attorney. And, and that was made very, very clear. And, you know, I'm, I'm not an attorney and, and, I mean, but it kind of makes sense. If, if you've got an attorney, that's the one that needs to get the answers. And I, I do think after listening that, that part of the problem is, um, that these private attorneys are, they turn into paperwork and that's that. And give me my 25% and we're done. And they need to push the, the trust a little bit because supposedly they can get more answers out of it. And, but they're not, they're not putting forth that effort either. So, I think it's a combination of things. And again, hopefully we'll have, um, opportunity with this Kathy Yanni that, that can, can assist us and, and we're, we're going to work with her. And Kevin, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's just frustration. Just ultimate frustration. Yeah. And, uh, the, there was a lot of finger pointing going on throughout the, the conversation. Um, and I do believe that the path forward is through Kathy because I don't think that, uh, um, putting pressure on, on Justice Trotter is, is working at all. So.
I, I've got Watts career with Joe Early and, and, uh, Cindy Wilson is their head paralegal and have a great relationship with her. I've talked to Guy Watts a number of times. They have meetings weekly with Kathy Yanni, that legal team. They talk to her weekly. They have meetings to talk with. They have a number of clients. And their, their frustration is the same. Even Kathy Yanni, they are not transparent. They give them just a lot of excuses why this process, that process, one thing or another. So, uh, good luck. I hope you keep the faith, but I have little to no faith in the trust.
Well, okay. Anyway, uh, thank you. So, future agenda items?
So, we have the, the grazing, uh, item.
And shorter meetings.
That's all up to you.
Okay. Town manager report.
And I'll keep it brief. Um, June 22nd at 10:00 AM is our big IBHS, um, uh, event. It will, do we have the location? We have the location, but is it, it's not public yet. Okay. We will have the public, we will have the location and it'll, look for it through your email. Yeah, to look through it for your email. But, uh, please, if you can, show up though. June 22nd at 10:00 AM.
22nd?
22nd. Two-two.
Two-twos.
Six-two-two.
That's the word, two-two?
Yes. Um, and then we, we had a, uh, one of our things that we had this, this last month too is, uh, HCD was on site, um, going over all of our projects here and asking a lot of questions. One of the positive things is that we've put together, Mark put together a great list of projects for the unmet needs for the CDBGDR funds. Um, one thing HCD is doing is actually using other state departments to run these projects through to look for other funding available. So, that, that CDBGDR is kind of a gap funding if there's other funding available. So, working through those projects, Mark's done a great job of really submitting the maximum amount of unfunded, uh, or, or the, the amount of projects that are unfunded. And roads and all, not private roads, uh, but other roads that, for evacuation routes, opening up evacuation routes, the sewer project, all of those projects are really moving forward. And we feel very, very positive about, uh, this announcement, hopefully that's coming at the beginning of next month. So, those are the two big, uh, items. Any questions? Hearing that.
Community Development Director report?
Thank you. This is just to give the council just a brief update on some development projects that are still in the works over at the brick, just so you know what's happening. Uh, the plans for big lots have been approved. We're just waiting for them to pick them up. And that's to backfill the old Rite Aid space up in the Kmart shopping center. Uh, we have those 45 apartments and 14 Airbnb, Airbnb units over by the hospital in the old retirement residence. You might've got the notice for the ribbon cutting. So, that's 59 units. That should be finaling pretty soon. They're almost done. Uh, we are working with a developer to try to use some of that $55 million multifamily CDBGDR money to rebuild the condos on Maxwell Drive. They were called the Central Park condos. And these would be affordable units. So, they're working through getting their tax credits right now. But that one looks like it's going to come to fruition. And instead of doing senior two, they were fourplexes with two bedrooms per unit. These would be all ages, one through three bedrooms. They're going to build like a little playground on site, um, build them within the same footprint because they're condos, but it looks like it's going to happen. And then also, we have one public housing, uh, project in town that Butte County Housing Authority owns in a residential neighborhood. It's a multifamily rebuild. So, that's in for plan check also. And then, uh, a while back, we had a grant to scan our 11,000 septic maps. And we finished scanning, half of them, right? Half of them are uploaded on the map already with, we partnered with Rebuild Paradise. So, their online map where you can see all the surveys that have been completed, they have another map layer that says septic capacity. You click that on, there's about 7,000 records uploaded. We should get the final corrections from our other partners this week and hopefully by the end of June have the whole map populated. Type in your address, it zooms into your parcel, you click on the link and your septic map and your septic, um, capacity report comes up. So, you know what you're approved for rebuild.
Did you find mine yet?
Oh, my goodness. I know, we probably did. I should look.
Okay, yeah.
So, that has been decades. That's like been a pipe dream forever to actually see this come to fruition. I'm so excited. So, as soon as it's real or fully populated, we'll announce it to the public. We just didn't want people anxious because their lot wasn't there yet. But all the septic contractors know about it and love it. Like this guy.
The story, Ryan, is I thought that lot was built in 1965 and the septic map, the septic hoard and place system is still there. And it was pulled out years ago.
The file was misplaced.
And it was never put back in the file and it doesn't exist anymore.
That's a good point. I bet we found it. And then, uh, so tonight we talked about the housing element, but on its tails is the safety element. So, when we did those , uh, community meetings and the surveys, it was actually for both elements. So, it has been with Cal Fire for its initial review. We just got back the comments at the end of May. So, that's going to be the next thing we're tackling to bring forward. And then we'll start on the other five.
Quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the condos on Maxwell?
Yeah.
Are, are they low-income housing or?
That is what they'd like with the new project.
Okay.
Yes.
So, big lots, they're, they're not pulling the permit. They're, they haven't picked it up because.
It's all ready.
That probably triggers their, their lease, right?
That's a good question. I mean, there's people there. I was just by there today. It's Tuesday. So, I was having, you know.
I'll bet it triggers the lease. That's why they're not grabbing it.
So, they're painting and they're doing work on the outside. Yeah.
Yeah, I seen them doing some work on the roof.
But you're, you're probably right. Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's ready as soon as they are. That's it. Thank you.